Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to this December 19th Board of Education meeting. We were in executive session discussing personnel and contractual issues. Just so people know that we are being videotaped. I'd like to welcome our participation in government students. If we go past nine, we'll take a break and you can come up and sign out. We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, but following that, if we could have a moment of silence for the victims at Sandy Hook Elementary School last Friday, we could just do a moment of silence after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice and peril. No, it's just so disturbing. It's upsetting. If we can start with introductions.
Lynn Lenhart.
Kate Navarro.
Mike Cooper.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Diane Steer.
Matt Downey.
Laura Behrman.
Charmaine Wijssinger.
Judy Keough.
Okay. And next on the agenda is recognition of visitors on an agenda item.
Hi, my name is Pete Breeze and I'm again representing the track and field booster I did want to discuss one moment, the getting back to the condition of the track and the field out there. I did some research on the track materials and one thing has become obvious is that for the track to be cracking, it means it's lost its elasticity. The rubber material's lost its elastic capability, which at this point, once it loses that, it's not doing what it should be doing for the kids' legs that are running on that track. It should be compressing and protecting from shin splints and stress fractures and for it to be cracking, it's now completely compacted, lost its elasticity. So, it seems like it's getting, it definitely something needs to be taken care of. Secondly, I did look at a study that was done by the International Soccer Federation and they basically said that the synthetic turf is a credible alternative where climatic conditions and high usage make it impossible to maintain a high-quality and safe grass sports field. They established that there was a good return on an investment in synthetic turf pitches because of its high utilization and low cost of operation. And we have listened to the architects talk about the fact that the turf takes an inch of rain per week, an inch of water per week to maintain the proper compaction level on that. And I don't think we're maintaining it in that way out here on our fields. I'm not sure that we're irrigating and not only that, but when August rolls around and the football player goes, football team goes out there, we're likely to be in a scenario where we could be in a drought, a drought and water restrictions. So, the turf seems like the lowest possible maintenance and the highest utilization. So, as far as if we could go that way, it seems like we would get the best bang for our buck. Now.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks.
I have a question about the finance. Uh, going down in section.
Joanne, if you could, for the camera, please come to the microphone. Sorry about that. Yep, that microphone as well.
The finance section, section D, that you're extending the Realty USA contract again for the sale of Ed Center. I thought we finalized the sale of the Ed Center last meeting. Is that true or we didn't sell it?
Well, right now is with any type of realty sale, there's an offer, there's a signed contract, but that does not mean until we get an official sold that it's sold. So, we would still have to continue our listing until that point.
But we're still going forward?
I mean, we're moving forward. This is more a formality at this point.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Tim, or Jim?
My name's Jim Chaconi. I'm resident of the town, lifelong resident, also business owner in the community. As you know, I've been an advocate for improvement in our facility since the beginning. And though I appreciate the due diligence of opening it up to the community, have the transparency, I thought in a couple meetings ago when we talked about, you know, the middle forum group was kind of a split decision, I didn't realize I had a chance to talk, but I thought the third forum was when, was a real forum for the voices to be heard that was kind of announced and brought to all of us to speak. And I went to that meeting and witnessed probably 25 people speaking in favor of it and only a couple people against possibly reaching in for an extra $5 to make something great, not only for our physical education classes, but for sports and the community at large. And then when I listened to the facts of my own personal testimony from a poor field back in the days when I played in the late seventies and coached in the eighties and part of the nineties through Pop Warner, I listened to, well, Mike Leonard, the A.D. from Columbia, you know, he still says, he's talked to a few of you, but none of the real board members sought out and talked to him and asked him what kind of impact it had for their school, their community, their morale and that sort of stuff. I realized the athletic director wrote a nice letter in support, but I think in the years of Bethlehem and our soils as such, and with the architects, there's no guarantee on putting in natural grass and it might last five, 10 years if we're lucky, but could last five years for a turf field because of the compaction. That's correct, right?
Yeah, you gotta maintain.
And with the restraints on the maintenance and maintaining it over the years with even going to Pop Warner days, reseeding and trying to get it watered and put an extra responsibility on a janitorium custodian staff, it seems very, a very difficult thing. And then when you bring into the fact that the other fields could have a chance to rejuvenate and possibly some maintenance program could be, could be put in place because there wouldn't be such a strain, you know, from a business standpoint, an economic standpoint, it just seems like what a mistake it'd be not to, not to put this out to the community and try to do something great for the facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Eileen Fitzpatrick. I am, I've been a board member of the Soccer Booster Club for four years and I'm current co-president of the Bethlehem Soccer Booster Club. And I just wanted to be brief and say a few things. The, both, the, I, we're in favor of the third field option, the largest turf field option for soccer. It is the best option for the soccer program currently that you're considering. Both at a meeting last week, both the varsity soccer coaches, Coach Rogan and Coach Ridgway, indicated that this is the best scenario for, that would be the best scenario for the soccer program. The current field, the varsity field is in, is in poor condition and so the architect indicated that last week at your, or not last week, but at a previous meeting. So, it's in terrible shape and it's not scheduled for any kind of renovation. So, in that case, the, the full-size turf field, the option three that you're considering would be the one that we would support. If you build it, we will certainly use it. And it's my understanding from the Bethlehem Soccer Club, the community organization that feeds the soccer program at the, at the school level, they feel that the, that they are interested in, in any kind of rentals that they can achieve. They spend a huge amount of money outside the district currently renting fields, turf fields, so they certainly support the use of that. And as a parent also of four children, three still remaining in the district, the use of the field for phys ed, I think is an ideal scenario. So, you would require the turf field for that. So, once again, from a soccer perspective, we support the third option, the largest field, and we hope that you would consider that in your decision.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Brian McKenna. I'm a parent of two high school students and forgive me, I came in about a minute after seven, so I didn't know what the flow was for this and the procedure. I would just like to share that my children will be, won't have the benefit probably of these fields, no matter what the decision is. But I think what we're seeing in the communities and in the school districts and in the local municipalities over the last number of years is that a lot of fear and a lot of reality-based fear based upon the economic and political climates we've had. And I think sometimes this scream for fiscal responsibility makes us contract and sometimes we make decisions based on that fear. I'm not saying those concerns financially aren't real, but I do want to reiterate that sometimes fiscal responsibility isn't just about a commitment, not that any of you have taken that commitment, but a commitment to saying no. I think that's not leadership. I think fiscal responsibility is taking an astute look at opportunities like the one we have here to put this field and this top-notch facility project before the public at a time when aid is going to be maximized and where we may not see this opportunity for aid in the future. I don't think it's about excess. I think it's more about access. Not access, but access. I think that it's putting a field together that kids can be proud of, that communities can coalesce around, that we can enable our students and our children to really go out there and persevere and be parts of teams and have that drive, determination and hard work and see their goals coming together. It's gonna give them skills they're gonna take to the playing fields of life where they're gonna have to make those decisions, work as teams, set goals and work hard. And I think we need to give our kids that opportunity. And fiscal responsibility means seeing that that opportunity for these fields and this financial opportunity, this commitment is in front of us now. So, I hope you support it. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Mike.
Sure.
My name is John DeMayo. I'm the athletic director here at Bethlehem. I've been a teacher and athletic director for 33 years here. Like Jimmy, Jimmy played on the field, but I came in 1980 and we've had the same field that exists now. And with the use, it's definitely almost like playing on concrete, maybe with a small carpet on it. But it definitely, you know, is not putting our students in what I would consider the best safe environment. I think that athletics is an extension of the school day. We wouldn't put our students in classrooms while teaching is going on while interscholastics is teaching. And it's happening between maybe three or five or even later some evenings, but it's definitely, we want to put them in an environment that is safe and conducive for them to learn. Our maintenance staff does a great job. We've lost personnel in that department over the years and our fields have increased. So, obviously our maintenance has, you know, suffered a little bit, but they do a super job when they're there, but sometimes they're even taking off to go to another building, what have you, and we got three or four games. Sometimes we need fields lined, mowed, and it runs, it definitely exists in terms of being a problem at, you know, two o'clock and we got an issue with a field maybe not being lined. So, that's caused a little bit of a problem in our department. The other thing, I'd like to say that, you know, we have a good support tonight with coaches here. I know I did send a letter to the board. I hope you've all read it and had a chance and opportunity. Rick Leach sent a letter, our football coach. I have a letter from Chris Conan, who is the athletic director at Shenandoah. I'd like to read. He says, "John, one of the most decisions, most important decisions during my tenure as a director of athletics at Shenandoah was the move from a grass field to a synthetic turf field. Similar to your situation, our grass field was consistently underwater and often not playable for anything other than varsity football. Since moving to turf, we never worry about rain, field conditions or weather for any of the sports that play on the turf. The field and its ability to be used from sunrise to sunset has been a great source of pride in our community. Whether hosting sectional football games and community events, the turf has become a true centerpiece in our school and community. The turf has also had an impact of many programs in the schools from interscholastic athletics to physical education. Our students take pride in the facility more so than they did, they ever did before. We have cut down on our maintenance costs on the field, maintenance costs on the field and always find ways to expand use. The great thing about the turf is it can be used for hundreds of hours with little or no water or wear or tear. I would strongly recommend any district that is considering to move to synthetic turf, do so and think about the overall impact it will have on your school and your community. Please let me know if you have any other questions." Chris. For us to host any sectional events, whether it be soccer, lacrosse or track or field, it's definitely gonna have to, you know, have some kind of renovations. I, you know, hope you make the right decision for our student athletes. I probably won't be here when it's in place, but, you know, they deserve definitely, as Jim said, much more than, you know, they've had. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
Hi, Chris Manuel. Here on behalf of Bethlehem, Pop Warner, I'm the vice president of the organization. Speaking as well as three kids in the district. So, I'm sure I won't be able to articulate myself as well as those who came before me who did a wonderful job. From the, from the Pop Warner organization, obviously it's something that we would be thrilled at, we would support. We're kind of bounced around to the different fields. We're at the mercy of, we're grateful, but we're also at the mercy of the school system for our fields. So, a turf field would be something that we would certainly utilize whenever we had the opportunity. I think from a community perspective, you know, this, this community takes tremendous pride, as it should, in our academic standing of this, of this school. I moved here five years ago from a town in Ohio that took tremendous pride in both its academic as well as athletic communal aspects. I haven't seen that in Bethlehem. I see it in pockets and you see it tremendous at the, at the youth level, the soccer, the tomboys, Pop Warner. I think it dissipates when it gets to the high school unfortunately. And I'm not, I'm not insinuating that a turf field is gonna magically bring that to the high school level, but I think it will help centralize some of that pride as, as Mr. DeMayo said, that has experienced that Shen, is, it's a centerpiece. It's a centerpiece of athletics. We have tremendous potential with athletics in this town and I think that we have not, we're not reaching that potential. And the field's not necessarily gonna be there, but it's a tremendous foundation to get there. And I think it would just, I think it would, it would help over the years to bring, you know, the Friday night football games, that sort of community which is needed more than ever. I think it's a centerpiece for that type of, that type of activity. I think it would be a shame if the people didn't have the opportunity to, to vote on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Sorry about that. I'll do my best if you can hear me from here. Thank you. My name is Scott DeMayo, resident, my whole life of Bethlehem Central School District. I've chosen to raise my family here and for obvious reasons, academics being the most. It's a great community. And if I could just read a quick statement, hopefully quick. First, I would like to commend the board and the superintendent Douglas on their transparency through this whole process. I also want to state for the record that should the board decide to split the bond into two parts, which has been suggested at previous meetings, I think between the athletic and everything else, it would be setting a precedent that could lead us down a path of segregation and controversy for years to come. Where do you draw the line? I mean, when do you say this needs to be separated out? When does that need to be separated out? I really think it just sets us up for, for doing something that we may not be able to get back. We're one school district and we're one community with one mission. And if I could read you the school, school district's mission, "Children and learning are at the heart of Bethlehem Central. We cherish our students and challenge them so they develop the foundation to become thoughtful, responsible individuals. Through leadership integrity, we pledge to provide this education encouraging all students to reach their potential. As administrators, educators and parents, we strive daily to fulfill that statement. I share with you the district's goals as it relates to your mission statement, which is to fulfill this mission, the Bethlehem Central School District will use the following goals to guide our work. Knowledge, to improve learning and achievement for all students. Character, to foster a positive and safe school culture and environment. Value, to manage and improve the quality, the cost effectiveness and efficiency of the district's current and future operations. Bethlehem's widely known as a school with a high academic standard. It's why we live here, it's why we choose to raise our families here. We hope that the total educational experience augments what we, as parents, do at the home to develop the character of our children. We look for and expect experiences not limited solely to the confines of our classrooms. What makes for more well-rounded students is exposure to things like music, after-school clubs, the arts or athletics. The district should strive to be as revered in these areas as we are in academics. It is these controlled challenges outside of the classroom that children face, other than the academic setting, whether it's a team sport or taking on an instrument or participating in the play, that really enrich the children's lives and provide them the opportunities to work hard, try their best and deal with adversity or pressure, a variety that they will likely feel in the real world. Value is a word that really depends on your perspective. The board has agreed now on multiple occasions that something has to be done to our athletic fields. I think we can go back to a couple meetings and pull that from the notes. There's three proposals on the agenda for discussion, each one with a different perceived value depending on who you ask. Option A, principally fixing what we have, fixing the drainage, redoing the turf to grass, you know, at a cost of nearly $1.8 million, I believe provides the poorest value for the simple reason that natural grass is a living, breathing ecosystem and requires significant amounts of labor to keep it properly maintained. It also allows for one-sixth of the playing time compared to synthetic surface and virtually eliminates any thought of it being open to the public. In addition, given our track record of deferring maintenance, I believe we would have, be having a similar discussion for funding five or six or seven years from now. And since no one can guarantee us what the weather's gonna be, you can't really get a guarantee on what natural grass will provide. Option B, in my mind is, the phrase comes to mind is penny wise without foolish. That one basically is a redo of the footprint that we have. The challenge for that field costs somewhere around $3 million. The challenge? Okay. The challenge for that field is you're gonna spend $3 million and get something that's not gonna work for all sports, which really doesn't seem to make sense. So, it brings me to option C, which in my mind offers the district the best value. It would work for all sports. It would work as an education station. It would work for sports that wouldn't even play on the field, big, small, softball, anybody who needs a place to go on the grass, regular grass, and can't be played on. Synthetic turf offers five or six times more playability, which really talks to me about that, which is one of the tenets of what, you know, our, our mission statement is all about. So, if it's an investment that's good enough for nearly 20, 20-plus other school districts around the area, I don't see why it wouldn't be a good value for Bethlehem Central School District to make. And this last one is more just a general question. In all the meetings that have been happening over the last three to four months, there's one opinion that we haven't really heard, and that's Mr. Nolte's. Publicly, we haven't heard it. You all may have asked him behind the scenes, but I'd really like to know what he thinks the district should do from a value perspective.
Thank you and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Okay, Greg.
No.
No, I think you want to, right? No?
No.
Did you wanna make a comment or, or what you think?
No pressure.
Well, I kinda suspected this. So, I'll talk from a physical plant, facilities point of view. The high school and middle school fields in the 14 years, they have improved with conditions, believe it or not. Jim, I wasn't here in the seventies, but we have been doing things. The last bond in 2003, when we were looking at fields, we didn't address quality of fields. We looked at quantity, okay? And the thought was back then with the two added fields that maybe we could take a field out of play, rotate it and then basically work on that turf for a year and then, you know, rotate our field so we could at least, at least try to start improving some of the quality. With the use of or from athletics, PE, the town, the community groups, this, this just hasn't happened. We've seen an extensive use throughout the school year plus also summertime. We're starting to see more and more use during the summertime. So, considering all of these factors, considering the extensive use, limited O&M staff to maintain these fields, regulation changes. We are very limited with what we can do from and what we can apply to fields now from the point of herbicides, pesticides, insecticides. So, we battled broadly for a period of time, which doesn't make great athletic turf. It's very hard for, we can't treat that anymore, okay, necessarily. So, and then the other thing that I think that has happened over the years too that I've been seeing more and more since I've been here is a very high expectation from the user groups, okay, the players, the community, from coaches and staff like that. So, you know, I, I support a synthetic turf concept, all right? And I think that having synthetic turf will provide the district a great tool of turf management, okay? And this tool will help us with the use and the abuse of our fields, all right? Throughout the development of this bond, the community and the board wanted us to look at evaluating, improving all the fields and not just, just the track field, okay? We're trying to put in or to think about some long-term management plan that we could put in place to first improve the fields and then maintain the quality of these fields. And I understand that, you know, good turf doesn't happen overnight. It takes a while for your roots to develop, just like, just like in a golf course. And, you know, we could spend a lot of money and make our fields all great now, but we just can't walk away from it. So, there's gonna have to be that, that continued effort on our part as a district to watch over these fields and to maintain these fields. And as Scott said earlier, it's a living ecosystem basically that needs to be looked after. So, I'll say it again, just synthetic turf field would give us a tool that, that we could use to basically maintain all of our fields. So, I would support a concept.
Thank you, Greg.
My name is Tim Minich and I am, well, I am the president of the BCAA. I don't speak for the BCAA tonight. I just speak for myself. And we've heard a great deal about some of the alternatives that are on the table and I can't possibly add anything to that. It's been a great education for me to sit here in the audience the last three meetings and to learn. So, I thought I'd try something just a little bit different tonight. Once upon a time, there was a group of people from all walks of life. Once upon a time, there was a group of people from all walks of life who contributed their time and energy to create a successful, successful community. They were not experts in this field, but they shared a deep and abiding love of children, not just their own kids, but all the kids in their community. These people didn't always agree on how to best care for the children, because caring for children is complicated. But they listened to each other, they trusted each other, they knew that sometimes they might not get everything right, they might even fail. But they were comfortable with this because they knew what they were doing was hard, and that the secret to success is failure. Not failing all the time, but learning how to deal with failure, learning how to overcome failure, learning how to learn from failure. For lack of a better term, they knew the importance of character, not just treating each other with respect and dignity, but another kind of character as well, one characterized by curiosity and optimism, by zest and grit. And these grownups also believed that the best way to teach kids about the importance of character was to model it. And that is exactly what they did, on every decision, ones that got a lot of attention, and the ones when no one was paying attention. And as a result of their love of kids and commitment to character, they created a community where kids and their families were successful. And they all lived happily ever after. Thank you.
Sean Schreiner, I've been the Bethlehem Track Coach for the last five years. Since I've been here, the facilities have gotten progressively over the last year, a lot worse. Currently, right now, I have eight athletes, I have eight athletes that I can't even have compete or are out on the track running because their shin splints are so bad. I've had them using bikes, or they're doing different kinds of exercises just to practice. I have one child right now who's in a boot because of stress fractures. Some of those athletes that are competing right now, they might have stress fractures, but I've just been putting them on rest and they haven't seen the doctor. If they get progressively worse, that's the next step, okay? Also, right now, I mean, you put rubber cement to cover up the cracks for right now. And just like if you go out on the roads and during the wintertime, water gets in there, things freeze, they expand, cracks only get bigger. All right? As of right now, I don't know if the rubber cement is the real work for this year, but when it thaws out and we go out for spring track, I don't know if those facilities are going to be even enough to host any of our home meets that we take care of. That means we're going to have to do is to go to another school, borrow their facilities, have to ask our parents to come out over there to help us work the events. They get all the revenue from the, from working the concession stands, they get all that kind of things. And it's only getting, I mean, it's not getting any worse. I mean, also with the field, I work in other school districts, and Bethlehem had to come to our place where I was, and we got all the revenue from all the concession stand there. And that's pretty much all I have to say about that, so thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it. Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes, minutes on the December 5th, 2012 regular board meeting, is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, Student Senate report. We'll come back to that, maybe? Okay.
Haven't seen Jamie.
No, no, sometimes they come in a little bit late, so. Are you here? Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Senator Dutz, I'm part of Student Senate. Lately, we've been working on organizing the Spirit Week before the snowball dance, and we've also been organizing for the snowball dance. A couple of weeks ago, we finished up the holiday food drive, and we helped the Counseling Center to distribute boxes to all the homerooms, and then to collect the boxes and organize all the food. So, it's just.
That's pretty good, Andrew.
Thank you. And now we have our Superintendent's report, Tom?
Yes, I'm going to go and take a couple of brief minutes tonight. First of all, I'd like to commend a couple of people as we've been recognizing some of the outstanding Section 2 contributions throughout the year. At our last meeting, we did not have these in time on my desk, so I apologize for the lateness. But I'd like the board, as well as the faculty and staff and the community to recognize this year's Section 2 Soccer Coach of the Year being Mr. Phil Ridgeway from our boys' soccer program, as well as he's informed me that also Ethan Gunti was named Player of the Year for Section 2, and Alex Kessler was also named Goalkeeper of the Year for their outstanding season. So we will certainly get some letters of acknowledgement out to those individuals, and we wish them well as they ended up a very fine season. I would be remiss if I didn't mention some of the safety and security issues. I would like to ask at this time the entire administrative staff that's here tonight to please stand. The reason why I'm asking them to stand is these individuals have been tirelessly performing safety and security reviews throughout the week to make sure that we try to care for the students and the community of Bethlehem the best we can in conjunction with all of our resources. And I know they've given up a great deal of time this week to try to assure that although there are rumors out there in every district primarily at this point, they are working very diligently on behalf of the board to ensure that our schools are educationally focused moving forward and that we address everything. I want to thank you all. So thank you. It's never easy. As a district, we always look to improve, and I think that's going to be some of our talks with our architects as we move forward with some of our discussions, which we are unable to at this point. We want to thank the community for being understanding and also being very open and vigilant about what they know and communicating it to our building leaders so that we can work with them, and if we're not available, to our local law enforcement agencies, whether it's the Bethlehem Police Department, who have certainly been arm-in-arm with us all throughout the week, as well as the Sheriff's Department for Albany County, and the state troopers. There is not one facet of these organizations that would not give anything to prevent these tragedies from hitting our homes as well. And we certainly are with our fellow colleagues across the state, across the nation, and especially in Newtown, as even a little town of Newtown strikes Bethlehem and the Albany community in our hearts. So thank you, and please understand that when we communicate issues, we are giving you the best information that has been researched and looked into by our local law enforcement agencies, and we are trying to move forward in light of these times. So we will be here the rest of the week, and our SNN stands at this point, and we'd ask you to sign up if you haven't already done so. So thank you. At that time, ladies and gentlemen, I know there will be a little more discussion of the topic of issue tonight, but I'd like to turn over the rest of my time to the first part of the presentation, and Mr. Dave Norman at this point to come forward, as I know they've been waiting as well. So David?
Usually, we do the Board of Education report first.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring their, I'm bringing theirs into my report for the donation. You'll accept it.
Thank you. The Bethlehem Music Association has once again made generous donations to the district for the purchase of instruments. I have here the BMA President Mary Chang, and I'd just like to take a moment to read from a letter that I'll be presenting to Mary this evening. On behalf of the Bethlehem Central School District Music Department, I want to thank the Bethlehem Music Association for its donation to the district for the purchase of two half-size string basses. These high-quality intermediate instruments will be in a valuable addition to our inventory, facilitating the proper development of growing basses. Our district's music department will once again be so acknowledged by the Bethlehem Music Association for its continuing generosity and outstanding support of our music program.
And I would just like to say, BMA, very pleased to be able to provide these funds, and furthermore, that this purchase is being made in memory of Mary Jane Hughes in recognition of her standing contribution to the spirit of the home music district.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Thank you on behalf of the board, to the BMA and their leadership, and also dedication to our students. Ladies and gentlemen, this would conclude my report for tonight, and I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Great. Board of Education report.
I went to the NISP, School Board Association, the Understanding Employment Discrimination, then went to Law Conference up in Albany. I have a book, I'll give it to Dr. Douglas to keep in our library. It was a series of about six presentations presented by attorneys on a range of topics related to employment discrimination. I'd encourage the board to look at this as a resource, particularly on the presentations on gender and gender identity discrimination, because it was very interesting and it's kind of breaking law, breaking legal traditions. And also, there was a session on the ADA and genetic medical information, which I think we don't always think about. It was very eye-opening. The thing I'll say about the conference, though, is it is a legal conference. It talks about encouraging districts to accommodate, to respond, to address retaliation, and prepare their defenses against claims. So it's an important piece of information for us to have. As a social justice educator, I would hope that as a school district, we go beyond thinking about defending ourselves, but, and further into creating a climate where all employees and all students can be who they are, free of retaliation and harassment. So it was interesting being their double-edged sword. I thought, well, very, given my profession and my background, it was interesting to hear how we should be always preparing ourselves for defense, and not so much on preparing ourselves to be an affirming organization. But I'll leave the resource there. I also attended the middle school seventh grade concert, it was excellent. Great conducting and choice of songs, great performances by the kids. And lastly, thanks to Justin Brown and the Tech Department, who got me back online after being a couple of days off the portal because of Bosse's issues. I appreciate the Tech Department's support of the board.
Great, thank you. Mike?
Friday evening, I was able to attend the Theater Without a Net performance of Twelfth Night, and I just wanted to commend all the students, both on the stage and off the stage, for all the hard work that they put into the production.
I started out at the Law Conference, but I had to leave the Law Conference to go to another meeting that was arranged by Michael Rebel, who is from Columbia University and heads up the Campaign for Educational Equity. Years ago, he had the lawsuit for the Campaign for Fiscal Equity, now it's Educational Equity. And his report is out indicating that they did a sampling all over the state, that many districts, and this was a variety of districts, all kinds of districts, did not receive sufficient resources. So he's doing this in preparation of filing a lawsuit, and I think he's just waiting for the Governor's Commission, Education Commission, to issue their report, you know, to kind of react to that first. But actually, it was a very interesting day with education stakeholders from all over the state at the meeting. And then I was, then I was down in Terrytown for the GEA Summit. It was the gap elimination adjustment summit. As you know, something we've been saying in the last several years about the budget is that every year, we're told, we're getting, for example, last year, we were getting 4% state aid, but in reality, it may have come in that way, but then the bottom line is then they take, then the state takes it back in the gap elimination adjustment. And we're not talking about peanuts, we're talking about a couple of million dollars each year that we have not had as a result of that. So this was kind of, again, drawing a lot of that same information together and trying to decide how best to approach it, since we're told there isn't money, so how do you try and, you know, effectively receive more aid? Whether it's elimination of mandates, et cetera. So that also was a very interesting day, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, which leads us into our presentation, I think Tom is going to talk about that.
Yes, tonight with the scheduled presentation, we have Dan Hugh Craft and Pete Osborne, as well as Greg Nolte here, to continue where the board left off from the last meeting with discussions on the facilities. One of the things that we wanted to inform, we also put out for the public, I don't know if there was enough copies, but if individuals could share. Ashley McGraw later today was able to give us a much firmer update, and this was the document that was in the back of Potential Costs, where we have a column that's called Probable 2014 Construction Costs, which is in green. As you go down that column, you will find that some are in yellow. The numbers that are in yellow are numbers that have yet to be confirmed. The numbers in green, Dan, you feel are pretty confident numbers at this point. And then the third column is a running total that goes all the way down. And I would remind the audience, as well as the reporters that are in the room, that this third column is without soft costs. Those costs have to be added on top of this. The reason why soft costs are usually done later is because you have to start out with a maximum amount of soft costs, and as the project gets closer to decision point, the architects, the engineers that are working on it are able to bring those costs more closer in line with projected contract discussions that are out there, as well as design options and construction options. So right now, our soft costs are at our maximum amount in their eyes, and they should hopefully, from what I understand, go down as well. How much, I cannot say. That will be something that over the next couple of weeks, we're hoping to get closer to a refined number. I'm trying to think. At this point, what happens is this list is now in overall priority. I want to thank Mr. Nolte, as well as the administrative team, for getting together, and we've sent this off to Ashley McGraw, that after today, this will be the last time you will see the list in the district's format. From here on out, it will go to Ashley McGraw's format, which will have its overall priority list in its calculations and in its presentation. But their presentations will then be broken out by individual coded buildings. And the reason for that is because they need to prepare their documents site by site in compliance with state education, as well as soft costs will start being built in at that point, so that it's all one number. So I just want to get the board, as well as the community, set that these are the numbers, and we've tried to keep it at a consistent format, so that we weren't switching things around on any one at this time. But it will switch, and then the only documents that will be used at that time will come from our architects. They will have the built-in priority list, they will have the built-in costs, and the built-in soft costs. That should hopefully be prepared for, I believe, the second. Okay?
What about the energy forms contract, will they have that separate also?
We're going to ask them to discuss that, and that's an issue that we do need to talk about. So that's where we are currently with the list. The board members have a hard copy in front of them. In addition, just so that we have it, we also have the projected timeline that we've put up there for somewhere in March, with the earliest being around March 4th, depending on decisions and getting to a point that we could potentially have an open community forum somewhere between the 2nd and the 16th. That right now, we are on that timeline, and the board has been responding to that. But that can always be subject to change. And just want to make sure, for Ashley McGraw, we have the overall field diagram, and we have the sample building aid costs that we can get to in a minute. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Greg, Dan, and Pete for any discussions or information that you have to be able to give to the board of where we're at at this point. Great?
I want to go back to the overall list.
Okay. And you have this at the computer, so I'm all done.
I think as we've talked, this is a continually developing list.
We've worked. We're trying to... There you go. I don't have that much to say. We are continuing to work to refine scope, and as well, working with Ashley to identify the numbers. There have been some surprises with some of the numbers. As you see, I think we only have about 16 items left that we are feverishly working on to, to refine and identify those numbers. And those are in yellow, and we're very close to eventually turning those to green, so we can talk all the numbers. So I guess we can open up for conversation. I'm not sure if you want us to identify certain items that were surprises to us. And I guess, I think we probably should, the biggest one was item number three, the roofing at the high school. Dr. Douglas is nodding. Dan, do you want to just speak to that?
That was a surprise to me today, so.
Well, like you said, we are still getting, no, we just got information to Greg this morning. And about two weeks ago, when we had our last meeting, we were, there were a lot of items in yellow, and we did notice a few irregularities. And one was item number three seemed to be not quite right. And I was discussing that with Greg two weeks ago. We really got to dig into this. And what we were looking at is the 2010 number that was there, did not have as much scope as what we're showing here. So that number is, is a conglomeration of many different things. One is, we are looking at more square footage of roofing than we had previously done. As you can see, it says, it also includes another section of roof F2. We are trying to look at all those roofs holistically, and I think Mr. Cooper had some questions about that previous meetings. How do you look at roofs? Do you look at pieces and parts? And so we broke the whole roof number into its component parts, and we looked at those square footages. We looked at the cost being projected in 2010, and, which was slightly lower than what we're looking at now. So we went from a differential of 2010 numbers to now numbers, plus inflation for 2014. We also looked at, the scope increased a little bit by adding this extra wing, because we wanted to look at everything, at that vintage, at that age, at that performance level, the roofs that were bad. And we also needed to look, and I think I mentioned it earlier before, there is a requirement for structural reinforcing on any roof work through SED, the State Ed Department, because of snowdrift. So when you have high-low roofs, you need to address that, look at it. You may need to add reinforcing steel. So that number jumps up pretty high, too, because we're budgeting a certain amount of steel that makes sense for that building. That could, like Dr. Douglas said, these numbers could come down once we really find out what's needed there. But right now, we want to make sure that the budget is, is robust, and it has everything we need to have to take care of that roof, or all those roofs. There's seven sections of roofs there. So that's scope increase, structural increase, inflation, old numbers. And I think that 2010 didn't have the roof replacement extent, meaning they were going to, it looked like that plan, part of it was to leave some insulation or some pieces that are in place now, and just kind of go over them, roof over them. And that's a strategy, you know, you certainly could take, but it's one that's not, we've heard discussion tonight, when you're looking at 20 to 25-year warranties, full systems warranties, going right down to the deck, you want to make sure that you are replacing a roof and providing a brand-new roof that's going to last the 20 to 25 years you need, and is fully warranted. So that's what we looked at, that number before, seemed a little light. We were not apologetic. We want to make sure that the number is a good number. So that's why that one jumped. There are some other numbers that jumped up a little bit, not as dramatically as that one. But again, we've been spending the last two weeks, I think the last board meeting, we had just concluded a lot of investigation work the day before. So we've put all that into action. As Greg says, we're working on some of those, about half of those yellow numbers, we've gotten numbers for today. So we just couldn't get it up into that. And right now, we're working on kitchen equipment and security and things like that. So those, those, yes. So those should be coming by our next meeting.
And, Dan, on the turf and everything, the three layers, are those numbers, Pete, very accurate now? I mean, they haven't changed much from start to finish?
Yeah, they, we went through and looked at them again, and sent out our, you know,
Did I pass it? There you are.
And that's for each of the drainage option, the turf within the confines, and then the expanded option?
Option one is, is your natural grass field redone on the inside of the current track, and then recoding the track? Option two is converting, basically adding another lane and, another two lanes, to make it an eight lane all around, and, and having a synthetic turf inside. Option three is redoing the whole track and field and having a wider field, so you can have the 75-yard-wide soccer field on the inside.
I have a couple of questions on items. Can I ask a couple of questions on individual items?
Absolutely.
There are a couple that are marked priority threes, 135 and 143s. 135 is exterior handicap ramp repair, and 143 is upgrade bathrooms for handicapped accessibility. If they're not accessible, how come they're priority threes? I mean, are we in violation of the ADA, and why are they priority threes and stuff like that?
Item 143 is the operations and maintenance facility. We do have a handicapped restroom there. It's used by one female staff. This would be actually to make the men's room handicapped accessible. Okay? So if, if we have somebody that comes in, they, they can, we are small operation, so they could use the women's room.
Okay. And what about the 135, the ramp, exterior handicap ramp repair?
This is at the, the middle school. We are, we are looking into this situation, because the ramp is, is new as of, of the bond. And we're looking at a detail, part of the one wall, some of the, the fasciommationary work is actually coming out. And we're trying to figure out why.
So the ramp's operational, that's just?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. The other thing I'll mention on 94, 95, and 96, these are the playgrounds?
Yep.
I think I've talked to this at every meeting.
Yep.
I see that they're yellows.
Well, we're...
Again, playgrounds weren't even on there until during the interviews. I kind of got wind that they could be aidable. And then suddenly, they went up, and now the third one's been added for $100,000. I do know, only because I live in the Elzmer-Cashman area, that they are continuing to fundraise. And again, would, at some point, I don't know if the principals can speak to it, if they're looking for $100,000, or if they are looking from some portion of that $100,000.
We've actually had meetings, I've had meetings with both Glenmont and Elzmer PTAs. They both are working towards fundraising, no matter what happens with this bond. We haven't, they haven't, they're going to continue to fundraise, okay? And that's pretty much, we're looking at various designs, various elements. And that's kind of like where we're at, at least at this point.
I realize that in a way, it's a drop in the bucket, but I still, I flagged it, because it's always been listed as $100,000. I think a third one was added, so. Those are all my questions.
Anybody else have any questions?
So the option one, you said that you're just resurfacing the track with option one, so there would be no, whatever may have caused the cracking or whatever, the subsurface isn't being addressed in any way?
Well, we will, we'll look at that, and a lot of things, we'll cut out sections that are bad and redo them, and then put a coat over top of it. We've done that in different districts, but essentially, it's basically natural.
And there's actually tests that you can do to see, basically, the compaction or the cushion of, of that inch-and-a-half cushion that we have, to see whether or not the sun has vulcanized that rubber and made it quite a bit stiffer. Because the intent now is just to basically coat it with, right now, we have a red coating that pretty much is worn down. That was, I think, the number that we put in to this, basically, to resurface that, at least at this point.
I do have more questions about the field and option one, but my sense is we'll be discussing that more and more. Dee, does it hold the question?
Since, since State Ed is requiring districts, at first, they said 5% to put away in reserves for, for improvements in technology, so that the assessments, future assessments of 2014 will be online. I think they've gotten rid of the percent, but they still want a few, they want districts to put away a few million dollars, I'm not sure from where, but, in order to have the technology available to do this. Now, since we are probably doing this bond, are we including what would be needed so that, you know, we'll be all set for that? Maybe Sal, maybe that's a better question for Sal.
Yes and no. From an infrastructure standpoint, yes. So the underlying infrastructure, wireless, the switches, yes. From the instrumentation standpoint, tablets, Chromebooks, or whatever we use at the student level, that is really considered instructional. So that's something we would have to consider above and beyond what this bond is identified at this point.
Right. And that, that kind of equipment wouldn't be part of, wouldn't be covered aidable in the bond?
Only if you're adding classrooms based on increased enrollment, does that, that type of material get covered.
But at least the infrastructure.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that, that additional would be more like in those soft costs, because that's the equipment, or like classroom furniture and so forth. It's interesting that the state threw this out at this point and made a recommendation for something that is going to be put into place, I think, 2014. The board is luckily in a position where you're considering some of these options to offset some of our budgetary items that we would have to put in place if this mandate comes to fruition, which there is an all likelihood that it will. So the timing of this couldn't be better probably for us, as we're having these discussions, to try to at least repair part of it through bonding on the infrastructure side. The other side, we'll still have to deal with budgetarily.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I guess we just...
Questions and stuff on field, please. This is a good time to ask if you have, like, costs or understanding questions on field as well.
Well, I, I was just a little surprised when you were talking on option one about being a five-year option today, because at the last meeting, we had, really for the first time, about a 15-minute presentation on how option one would work. And I believe I'm remembering correctly, that you, we asked you several times, and I know Dr. Douglas, there's some questions, on whether or not option one would work on this field. And I recall you saying that it would. Have you changed your mind?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused as to what you're asking.
At our last meeting, we had a 15-minute or so presentation of what option one would entail with the slides. And then we asked you several questions. And I know Dr. Douglas asked you a couple of questions about would it work with our field conditions and the so, and I believe you said yes.
You're talking, you're talking about the sand?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. It, it would work. It would improve what, what's out there now.
Okay.
It would improve any of your fields out there. In fact, I actually have test reports back from our study of all your fields. And one of the recommendations is exactly what I'm proposing here, that he has, so.
Could you, we haven't seen the test results, though. Could you maybe discuss?
No, I just got them the other day.
Oh, okay. Could you maybe discuss them for us, so that...
Sure. He, he basically, we, we took samples at every, all of your fields, for a total of 10, 12. And then we sent them to a laboratory, and this guy's world-renowned as far as a soils expert. He's done a lot of USGA, PGA-type stuff. He's been an expert in helping recondition the, the gray field in Central Park. So we'd like to utilize him, because he's local to, you know, central New York. And he basically indicates that most of your fields are a sandy loam, or, and basically, which is a decent topsoil for growing grass in. However, the components of the sand are in the fine and very fine particle size. So they're prone to compaction. So continual aeration of the fields to keep the, the field open and well-draining is necessary. If you don't do that, the fields, especially when they're wet and played on, they'll, they'll be compacted severely, and then impacting the drainage even further. He's suggesting two options. One, I think, is kind of cost prohibitive, but the first one he suggests is mixing a lot more coarse sand in. But you need to mix a significant quantity in to be able to keep that open, and that ends up being rather expensive. The second option is exactly what we, and I think we have the slides here still, is to put in vertical drains every so often. And it was, I had it on the, or the desktop. Yep, there it is.
You can, you can control it right from...
So what, based on what he had in his report here, if you went to the grass field, we would basically be doing this method here, where we would cut in the, the vertical drains, and then do on top of that, the Sandmaster. However, your game field is, has a very low crown. And he's recommending, as, as I had in the past, had recommended a percent and a half or greater pitch from the center to the sidelines, and you don't have that out there. So we would need to pick your field up a bit, and then cut the drainage in and recondition the topsoil. The other thing is, is we looked at the, he looked at the organic content in the soil, and a lot of your fields are either at the low end or below the low end of, of the organic component that should be in the fields to effectively grow decent grass. So on, on a lot of the fields, we would mix in a compost of some kind back into the topsoil and re-put that back down. But the number for option one is basically taking off the topsoil you have out there now because of the crown, building up the crown, cutting in the drainage, putting in the side drainage, cutting in the vertical drainage, screening the topsoil, putting it back on the field, putting compost on the field, mixing it in, and then probably coming back, once it's all graded correctly, cutting in the vertical drains with the sand, of the Sandmaster, so that you have a well-draining surface. And then either seed or sod. And I believe, install an irrigation system so that you can keep it watered correctly.
That was my question.
That's kind of long-winded, but that's... Pardon?
How, what's the...
I think, what you were talking about is, in the conversation last, two weeks ago, with this cutting in of the sand, is it possible that over a period of time, that that sand and the drainage that it provides will silt in and stop working? And I think that's where we talked about, that's part of maintenance and...
It can. It, it needs to be top-dressed with a similar material over time, so you keep those channels open. It, it all, it all falls to basically use and maintenance. If you don't have enough money to maintain them correctly, you'll get the hollows in the center and things like that, and they'll start pounding water, and you'll be back where you are.
Glenn?
Do we have the maintenance people to handle this? Because we've been cutting, this is more for Greg. We've been cutting maintenance, like other things in the budget, for the last several years. Obviously...
What question is to maintain what?
Well, in this case, the first option, and would we, well, are there, okay, let me ask, are the costs for maintaining the turf field, the natural turf? me ask, are the costs for maintaining the turf field, the natural turf, going to be a lot more than the artificial turf in light of the fact that we've cut maintenance people?
The synthetic turf will not take as much effort from my staff to maintain that field as opposed to a growing grass field. Okay? If that, if that helps. Not to say that it is maintenance-free, but it will, it definitely is less effort on our part.
Can I ask that a different way? Greg, the, after the option ones were done on the field, the cost to maintain it wouldn't increase from what your costs are to maintain the field as it is now? Or would it?
Pete and I were talking a while ago that, you know, if, if these, if these roads of sand fail, well, what does it take to install new sand roads? And, you know, once we have the main drainage structure there, I think you mentioned about $11,000?
No, it's more than that.
More than that?
More than that.
You liked me.
Yeah, I did.
All right.
I got an updated number.
But I guess the question is, if we were to improve drainage, you know, is there more work, once we, if we do this improvement to all these fields, is there more work that we should be doing now or in the future? I know right now we spend a tremendous amount of time aerating, and that's an extremely slow process. We're primarily aerating because we're aerating in part to get the water off the field to help with the compaction that has happened because of the play. So, you know, I guess if we were to do this, the sand amendment to some of the fields, will that help with compaction? We will not have to be, we won't have to spend as much time aerating. We're still going to be mowing at the same rate, we'll still be lining for games at the same rate. Whether or not, we'd probably still be seeding at the same rate that we do right now, we might have more success, at least if we put irrigation on the track field. We do fertilize now, and if I'm hearing, our organics are down, you know, whether or not we'd have to change that program and increase that program a little bit. There's, I guess, a lot of unknowns at this point. Whether or not we'd have to use some type of herbicide, depending on our existing fields, if we have some weed problems that, you know, creeped up on us. I guess, you know, we'd have to look at a point in time. I guess I didn't really give you a really defined answer, because I guess I don't know.
Well, I want to point out one thing. If you spend the million or whatever to do the grass field, then you need to be able to top-dress it with the right material, which is more expensive than just a topsoil spread on top. So, you would have to buy that in periodically and top-dress the field in order to keep your investment. So, I think you're going to spend a little bit more than you are now on that field to keep it to where it should be, so it lasts for a while.
What kind of warranty would come with the option one of the redressing? And is there limitations on the number of events that could be held on that field during the year?
I'll answer the first one, or the second one first. The answer is yes, there is limitations, because you'll probably get more activities on it than you do now. But I, even a really good, well-draining grass field is only going to take so many activities before you degrade its character. Typically, we say, you know, maybe 25 activities in a sports season.
Does that include practice time then, too? Or no?
Yeah, yeah. So, in a year, if you get 50, in some places I've seen it go, you know, as high as 75 in a year. That's a lot for a grass field. You gotta, you gotta let it rest, and you gotta, you know, feed it, and you gotta water it.
Wish you don't have to do that with the part of issue.
No, you don't. No.
What was the first question?
And the first question was-
Was it warranty?
No, the, with the exception of things like the track and the turf, which are man-made products that are manufactured and bought in, or products that are brought in and applied by specialists, and maybe like roofs and things where you do have a warranty, on regular construction, you get a contractor's one-year warranty on it.
I also would just like to ask, two weeks ago, when you presented all this, and I think this is what kind of Charmaine was getting to, you were telling us about where it's been done in this state very successfully. And even one case where they were going to do something more and they ended up not having to do something more because it worked so well. It just seemed like it was very optimistic two weeks ago, and today, the picture you're painting seems much more pessimistic, and I'm kind of wondering what's going on.
That was my question, or what, I said, have you had a change of heart?
No, I'm not trying to be pessimistic. I'm trying to be realistic as to the difference between the artificial turf and what kind of use you can get out of it versus this. This will improve your fields, but it, but-
And you've seen it work successfully at many schools, you said, like, two weeks ago?
Yes, yes. And the reason the other school didn't do it, what we proposed for them was to do it in two directions.
Right.
But you can't do it all in one shot, because you'll rip up the field. So, we were going to do it in one direction, and then, because it was a two-year project, come back the next summer and go the opposite direction. They saw great improvement, and they felt that they'd rather put the money somewhere else, so they decided to take a credit for the second pass.
I guess, we're talking two different issues.
Yeah.
The, the, the success was the actual drainage and the improvement to the drainage that had helped.
Correct.
What we're talking about is just grass as, as a quality playing field, and how much can we play on it? And can you play on it nonstop? And I think that's where-
Yeah.
You started saying that you cannot play on it nonstop, it needs to rest.
You can't.
Two different things.
No, and from my experiences, having done like 40 or so of these artificial turf facilities, if you do it and do it correctly, it is a tremendous maintenance tool, because these fields can take three, four, five times the use that a grass field can take. Essentially, they take the place of three to five fields. So, if you say, say your soccer team is going to play on their field, but you have a torrential downpour all day long, if you can schedule it in where you, the game gets transferred over to the artificial turf field, you can still have the game, and you preserve the soccer field, the grass field, and keep it from getting, you know, beat up in a muddy game. And then also, if you, as Greg indicated, if you use this, you should be able to take a field offline periodically and not see any, any loss of use on fields if you rotate them through the artificial turf. If you use it as that, as part of, as part of your turf maintenance thing, that's the ideal. That really is ideal.
I think we're spending all this time talking about these different options of this field. The total difference in cost between one and three is $2.2 million, which, in terms of the entire bond for a person who owns a $250,000 home, is five to six dollars a year difference. And I'm not trying to trivialize $2.2 million in this budget, but this is not what's going to kill people in this bond, five to six dollars a year. The rest of this stuff is what's killer, but we're over a barrel, we have to do it. So, we're spending all this time figuring out the field, and I don't mean to trivialize what you do at all, I just, I don't need to know personally how you build the field. It's not my expertise, it's not my job, I have to know the details of my job. I have to trust you, I have to trust Greg. Greg's telling me you gotta do all this work to everything. We're going to have to, and just common sense shows me that, look at the amounts that these have changed from 2010. If we put it off again, how much more is it going to be then to do? And our budget's not going to get any better.
Hopefully it will.
I mean, realistically, we can't count on that. And I think all this stuff was pushed off in 2003, thinking things were going to get better, and they're not. I mean, TRS is going to kill this district, as well as across the state. In 2002, when the bond was being talked about, the percentage in the retirement was 0.23% of the salaries. It's now 16%. That's 80 times what it was then. And that's the problem, and I'm not anti-teacher, I'm not anti-anything, I'm anti how we're having to come up with the money, is what I'm anti. I'm not anti-retirement, I'm not anti-anything, I'm anti that they pushed it on to the school district. That's not getting better in the next three years. That's going up, up, up. We can't touch it at all. I agree with Mr. McKenna. Our job is not to just keep cutting from the kids, cutting from the kids, cutting from the kids. Five to six bucks a year to give the kids the field that they need, if you believe sports are part of education, which I do. And I think that's the discussion. I don't think it's hours and hours and hours of discussion over five to six dollars. You know, if we're going to do that, then you gotta do that over every single thing in here. I am totally Mr. Emanuel's, I believe we should be going for the highest academic standards and the highest athletic standards. And that's the discussion. If we, we never talk about that. We never talk about, is this important to us? We just talk about how you build the field, and how much it costs, and is it important? If it's important, do we trust the people that are giving us the advice? I have no reason to doubt Greg Knowlty. You don't seem to me that you're getting anything out of this personally, at all. So, I have to go with that. I have to go with that. I don't know how to build a roof. You can show me the roof, I can walk around the roof, I don't know how to repair it, I don't know when it needs to be repaired. So, I have to go with that. I don't know when a field is playable, when a field, I guess by common sense I do, but I have to listen to the coaches and I have to listen to them. And all of this discussion is over five to six dollars a year. That's all it is, for the average person, okay? A lot of people are going to pay $15, some are going to pay $250, something like that. But I think that's a conversation we have to have. Are we going to have to do all these things on priority one, two, and three? I, probably. They're going to be that much more expensive in 2015, and if we put up the grass field and it only lives for five years, are we going to be talking about this again for that five to six dollars, and now we've lost state aid, and now it's triple the cost of, I mean, realistically? I mean, that's where I feel like the conversation should be going personally, is to whether we feel it's important. Because it is, it's a lot of time over five to six dollars a year.
I would concur with Kate. I mean, that's the bottom line. It's really, at $3 million, it's $7.20 a year on a $250,000 house, which comes out to 60 cents a month. I mean, that's, that's what, because you gotta take the difference and-
And I didn't mention earlier that both the border regions and Microbell with the campaign for educational equity are proposing having the building aid formula changed so that more money goes into operator, operating aid, or fundamental, you know, fundamental aid for the state. I don't know how soon that would take place. I think we would be okay with this bond issue, but, you know, certainly, you know, a couple years in the future, I'm sure it's not going to be there.
I would hopefully, uh, don't know whether I'd be optimistic or pessimistic about that, because that has been proposals that have been there before. I know something's going to have to be done. But I'd also hope that the state, in its infinite wisdom, would be very careful, because if they do take away building aid for schools to be able to repair their facilities, their entire infrastructure in New York State runs a risk of crumbling very rapidly. I think, I agree with you in regards to the statement, this is the time, knowing that those conversations that are taking place, that we're at least in, hopefully, a better position, because anything that's enacted would not be something that would be before this potential project would come to any type of affirmation by the community, so therefore it would still run under the existing procedures. That's something that the state has always, if they put something in, they give a timeline at which time anything beforehand is okay, anything after would then fall under the new rules. So, we would have to be cognizant of that as a board. And hopefully, community.
Tom, what are you looking for from the board now? Are you looking for us to make a decision that which option of the field we would like to move forward with?
One of the things the board has to do in order, it's sort of like a chicken and egg scenario. You want to be concerned about price, but you also have to know what you're pricing. At this point, we started with about five, five options of potential repairs to the facilities and a list of options for the district for its BCS. Both have grown or mort in a way. At this point, we have much more confirmation on all the items, about 157, of which some of those we're going to remove tonight, too, at the very bottom. So, that's a good sign. But also, in order, from the last meeting to this meeting, we were to come back with three options. The three options are very clear. The only difference between each option are the drainage issue on the field, the field in its current condition transferring to synthetic turf is option B, and option C, changing the entire field to a synthetic turf that's multi-purpose for all of our activities. We need, as an administrative team and the architect, as well as landscape architect, to finalize the overall prices for the board, then to have any further discussion, what option or what field, or no field, so that we can package the final position to bring back to the board and say, here's absolutely the overall scope, now the only thing left is refinement. Do we do all of the option ones? Do we do all the option twos? Do we only do half? For the next discussion on the second. We're looking for a direction on which final pricing option to look at. It does not set the price, it just sets, here's the scope, now what price will be borne by the final decision of the board. And we have January 2nd to do that, and that helps us to get to potentially hearing from the community, a community public hearing. Between that point, before the board would have to make any final refinement of overall scope and final decision or resolution to meet your March goal of any type of public referendum. So, that's what we'd be looking for tonight. The last piece, I know finances have been a big piece, I would ask that, turn it over to Judy real quick. At the last meeting, the board asked to give sort of an update. We've done the update on the cost of a $250,000 home, as well as the cost of a $100,000 home, so it can be used out in the public to understand the differences and the multipliers making it a little easier. But let me find that real quick. And can I zoom in on that? How's that for the audience? Is that okay? Better? And Ms. Keighore has done that as well. Based on roughly denominations of 5 million, 10 million, although we left 5 million out because we know everything's divisible. So, Ms. Keighore?
Right. Knowing, originally, this came about when we were doing our Building Aid 101, just so people could understand how the formulas worked and what the dollar amounts might mean when we were asking the community to consider funding that local share. As we started to get the numbers refined on the full scope of these projects, we thought it would be helpful if we added the upper ranges. So, as Dr. Douglas noted, we went in $5 million increments from 10 million up to $25 million. It's basically extrapolating the very same figures that you had looked at previously, it's just growing by the size of the project. So, the range for a $250,000 home would range anywhere from about $24 a year for the smaller end of the projects, up to about $60 per year for that $250,000 home, if you went as high as $25 million. To make it easier for people to calculate, we also added the row to show what it would be per $100,000 of assessed value. And that local share, we estimated, was just under 5 cents per thousand. So, simply multiplying, multiplying that out by the size of the project, it ranges anywhere from 10 to $25 per year. One of the other things that you had asked about was, well, what about interest rate fluctuations associated with this? Right now, the interest rates are low- Right now, the interest rates are lower than the five percent that we had used as part of this summary. If it dropped by even one percent down to a four percent number, that would end up being about two dollars off of the twenty-four dollars per year. So it's a slight reduction. It wouldn't be what I would call a significant reduction. I still left these numbers though at the five percent because keep in mind that with the project timeline, the actual obtaining of that financing would be close to two years out by the time everything was done. So it's the most conservative estimate and we didn't want to show something that wouldn't be more realistic.
Now Judy, when you mentioned about that change in interest rate, if I'm assuming at five million dollars on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, we've always said that it's about twelve dollars a year. Now that would be about ten dollars a year.
It would be about a dollar for the five million, it would be two dollars for the ten million.
And that's what I was wondering, is it proportional like now? Would it be ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty?
A dollar per five million dollars of project.
Just wanted to see if it compounded or not, so.
Yeah.
This is above and beyond school taxes that we do for our budget.
Right, this would be an additional impact based on taking out this debt to fund the projects.
Judy, I don't know if you can answer this, but kind of asking a totally different question. On the operating budget, if we raise it one, I know it's tax levy, but if the tax levy were to be raised one percent, make it easier. What would that do to a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home? What kind of increase would that be on their taxes on the operating budget?
Total tax rate is around twenty dollars. So one percent of that would be about two dollars per one percent, back of the envelope.
So if the budget during our budget season in March, if we raise, if the budget tax levy went up two percent, you're talking about two dollars on a two hundred and fifty thousand-
On about two hundred and fifty, yeah. And I can update those numbers for the next meeting and just take the actual rates and have that for you. That's a little tougher to answer off the top of my head, but-
Yeah. The hard part about answering that is one percent in the budget is not like one percent of the budget towards the bond issue because there-
No, that's why I was trying to ask, that's what I was asking.
I'm trying to figure that one out, okay? I know that last year when we did like a one percent calculation, the difference between, I think it was two point nine to three point nine, was about on a one hundred thousand, I think we did one hundred thousand. It was like eighty-nine dollars was the calculate, calculation on that tax rate. But I'm getting confused with the numbers.
Wait, eighty-nine dollars for one percent?
I'm just saying that in our budget, in our budget, the way that's calculated to the budget would appear different than what it is here, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking anything here, I'm asking the other.
Instead of calculating quickly in my head, let me do an updated schedule on that and then I'll present that at the next meeting.
Yeah, because I, I think, Ms. Bearman, I think I understand what you're, you're looking at is how much in a budget if you tried to fund this.
No, 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 not at all.
Or how much it would be calculated on that budget every time you get there.
No, no, I'm not relating this to the budget at all. What I'm thinking of is I'm trying to think of these people whose taxes are going up, who we keep getting the criticism of raising the taxes. And if we have to raise the budget two percent in March, what's that doing to their taxes already? Plus then you have to add on, if they have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, another sixty dollars on top of whatever we will raise it in March.
I see what you mean.
And I, and so I'm trying to put the two together rather than, than do it differently.
Okay. You're not, I don't think you're saying this, but let me check. You're not saying whatever we decide here, we're going to subtract from what-
Well, that's one idea.
That's what I think you're hinting at. And I, I don't want to be tied to that.
No, I know. I'm just saying that I think we can't do them in isolation. I think we have to always be thinking about that because they're both going to be increases on people's taxes. And so we have to be aware and we don't know what we're going to be doing. Maybe you guys do, but we don't know what's going to happen in March yet. So I'd like to just kind of have a ballpark estimate. If we went up two percent, what would that do to people's taxes on two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home? Because you have to add that to the sixty dollars a year that their taxes are going up.
But also remember, one of the things that we talked about at the early presentations was based on our existing debt schedule, we have other debt that's maturing and is coming off of that. So you can maintain some degree of stability as well if you can replace the old debt with the newer debt.
But when you're trying, but when you're trying to sell this and then you're trying to sell the budget, this is what is going to be heard.
And you're looking for the cumulative impact. I understand what you're asking, let me calculate it.
Thank you.
What I would say is I want to be mindful always of what we're asking the community to pay, but I'm not going to tie that. I understand what you're saying.
No, 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 I just want to know.
But if you're saying increase there, we're going to subtract off the, I, I can't do that.
No, I know. I just, I just think we need to know what it's going to do to, to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homeowner. Does anybody else have a question for Judy?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. Personally, I'm in favor of doing one of the turf options. I'm still not decided on which one I'm in favor of. But I have a hard time saying that, well, it's only five dollars a year. It's five dollars a year on top of all the other tax increases that our community are facing and cost of living increases and everything else. And another thing that we keep hearing is that when we talk about this, we're pitting athletics against academics. I don't think that's the issue. I think it's a realistic estimation of what our community can bear. And separating out a want from needs, the building stuff is absolutely a need. I still say the turf, though I'm in favor of it, is a want. And I'm not willing to endanger the main bond proposal just to get the turf. I discussed my proposal last week, we can talk about it more later. But I just wanted to get it on the table that I am in favor of doing one of the turf proposals. Again, I haven't decided which one. But I still remain very concerned about what our community can bear.
I have a big fear also that the turf, if one of these turfs is in with all these other things, that the bond would go down. And we can't afford to have these other things go down. We need to do these other facility improvements. They're absolutely necessary and that's, you know, my biggest fear too that, and I've heard it from people in the community, that if the turf, if one of the turf options is in with these other things, they're, they won't vote for it. Now I know, you know, you hear it both sides, I know, you hear it from everybody. But I just, I think, you know, it's not, and they're, they're not coming out as much as the sports people. The sports people, you know, they're, they're going to want this. They're the ones that are going to come out and be more vocal at the meetings. And I think we just have to try and figure out, you know, we're taking a huge risk if we put the turf in with the facility things.
What I think I'd like to do is try and get a handle on, are we going to put the turf forward? And if we can discuss that and everybody kind of put, if we, if you want to put it forward and then which option you would go with. Because once we get that on the table, then we can, the rest will follow.
And before we got to how many bonds, I will speak, I'm against it. And although people have been talking in public about my opinion, because I've heard of this, I-
You're against what?
My opinion about this.
Against what?
I'm against a turf field.
Okay.
Although that decision has come, come to me tonight and over the course of today, as I've gone through all of my notes and all of the figures. And the reason I have, again, I've asked, I think, the most questions and I've told people the reason I ask questions is to get information. And I've been a little surprised that people haven't asked as many questions as I have. Is that something?
No.
Okay. For me, it's been a long process. I've asked for a lot of data and info as other people have and my perspective has constantly been evolving. For me, this boils down to how I approach the Clarksville decision, basically. Which is if I take away all the emotions and all the discussion and all the passion that's put out, it, for me, it's a matter of money. It's bottom line, a matter of money. And what the community has told us, what they're willing to pay and what they're willing to support. At the night that we had to vote for Clarksville, I turned to the then superintendent and asked him to confirm his numbers one more time. And once he did that, I said, done, let's move on. The number is here and I've appreciated the patience of the community who have emailed me repeatedly, what are you doing? Why are the numbers changing? Why aren't you speaking up? Because I'm waiting for the numbers and these are the numbers we got tonight, which aren't that far off except for a million dollars, I believe, on roofing from what we had, I think, since last Friday. So I've been waiting for the numbers. I've appreciated the work of the staff who are constantly responding to requests, get more numbers, get more data, get constantly. I can only imagine the amount of hardship it's put on you. And I've also appreciated the work of the parents on the Booster Clubs for constantly pushing the proposal and showing up. So I appreciate everyone's effort. Here's the deal, I'm not a member of Booster Club. I'm a member of the Board of Education. So I understand the passion, I totally understand my role and this is how I enact my role. The field was never, artificial turf period was not on the radar screen for the district. It was field improvements. The field can be fixed without synthetic turf. We have asked everyone in the district to change to save money. We have kids walking to bus stops, we have elementary kids going out of their home to save money. It was essential, let's save money. Teachers are going RTI, APR, fewer aids, fewer resources to save money. For me, it is a want versus a need. It's not anything sports versus something else. If a science, if the science department said, we have a problem in our science wing, I would say fix it the cheapest way you possibly can. If the music department had said, we have a problem with the stage floor and we can do this or we could do this, I would say do the cheapest option, that ensures safety. I would ask that of any department that said, we can fix it or we could go state of the art. For me, this is not the time for any program to go state of the art for our taxpayers. Couple more things. We have been accused of not supporting aspects of this program for the three and a half years that I've been on the board. Whether it's theater or music, whatever, it would depend, name your program, the board has always been accused from time to time of not supporting a program. For me, this is not an issue of supporting academics over another aspect of the program, it just isn't, okay? As a board member, I reflect on all the information, I recheck all the data, I looked at all those forums again and then I have to make a decision. For me, by the way, if you add up all the other aspects of what could be considered athletic usage that are in, on this thing, it's a two million, three hundred and four thousand, six hundred and ninety. That's anything to do with a gym or a pool. Add fields to that. Option one, on a bond, it could be a ten million dollar bond, a fifty million dollar, twenty million dollar or whatever. Option one, it's almost four million dollars on quote athletic facilities, which are used by students of, option two, five million. Option three, six million dollars is considered on athletic facilities. So it's not just a field, it's not just five dollars, it's millions of dollars. The community has told me, at least in our forums, they cannot support that. And I have seen members of the community take great risks, go to a microphone and say time and time again, I cannot support this. And I've seen members of our community insulted by other members of the community, which I am ashamed at myself for not responding to at the time. So it's for me, I don't believe in dividing parents into athletic parents versus academic parents. I have kids in the district, they play sports, I'm not an athletic parent, I'm a parent. My kids play in the band, I'm not a music parent, I'm a parent in the district. Some of the people who live here are not parents and never will be or have, are past the time of active parenting young children. I have listened to their voices, I believe it's my responsibility as a board member to go for the most economical option so that, and we haven't even talked about the amount of the bond. If we go for option two and we do everything from one to three, we're talking about a thirty million dollar bond or close to it. Even option one, I believe, is a twenty-six million dollar bond. And maybe we made a mistake by going out with early numbers of five, ten, or fifteen. But if you look at the tapes of those forums, people are saying, we're comfortable with ten, go to fifteen, depends what's in it. No one, and even we did, said go twenty or twenty-five. We will have to go higher than we initially thought because some of these things are essential. It is a disgrace in this district to have asbestos tile in elementary school. And whether, I assume I'm going to be in the minority for this artificial turf field, but I'm, I feel like I have to speak for the people who have spoken to us and say that I am against it because, not because I'm against sports or we're against turf. We cannot afford it at this time and we have more pressing issues that have to be taken care of. And that's my position as of tonight. Thank you very much.
I'm going to say it's personally insulting that you think that we don't do the research because we don't ask the questions.
It is. I will say that. We do the work. I think everybody on this board does the work. I don't think you're the only one that does the work.
I wasn't implying that.
I think, that's what you said.
No, I wasn't implying that.
That's what you said. It's a difference of opinion. I don't think without the sports and the fields that we can run the mission of the district. And I think that's the ultimate thing, I do. Do my kids play football? No. Do my kids play soccer? No. Are my kids athletic? Yes. Okay, they don't particularly play those sports. That's not the reason that I do it. It's not the reason I do this job here at all. I try to get the kids the best education I can because every other adult that works in this district or something is covered by somebody. The kids in this district aren't covered by anybody except the board. And I think it's our job and like Ms. McKenna said today, fiscal responsibility isn't doing the cheapest thing you can do. It's doing the best thing that you can do with the resources that you can come up with. And the community's going to flip out at sixty dollars a year. But it's, if you take field, the turf off the board, it's fifty-five dollars a year and it's twenty million dollars. And they're going to flip out at that just as much. So I, I think you do what you need to. I disagree and the board's going to be split on this. I don't think it's a want, I think it's a need. That's the difference.
Kate, you had option three, right?
Sure, my, you said that the public spoke to us. I've had a lot of people in the public come to me and say, please do the field. I mean, we all, I'm sure, have conversations outside of here and the vast majority of people that I have spoken have said that they would like to see the improvements to the facilities. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of option three and that's based on the feedback I've gotten from the community and looking at all the information, asking all the questions that I think all the board members have done and doing our due diligence.
As a senior citizen of the group, it's probably the one who will suffer the most financially from whatever we do with the bond issue. With that in mind, I always feel it's always our job to do what's best for students. I think that that's always been at the back of my mind for all these years, so certainly not going to change now. I was kind of, well, I mentioned last time that the high school was built on a swamp and I was not here then, I just want to clarify that. When it was built, when it was built on a swamp-
We sold the swamp land, huh?
So the soil has never, never been good at the high school. And I, and I can say, I mean, we've put money into the fields over my twenty-five years on this board and we still need to improve the fields. And I just, you know, my feeling at this point is that, you know, if we can do something that maybe can cut back on the, cut down on the maintenance, I mean, it costs more upfront, but maybe into the future it'll cost less. You know, I'm concerned with the turf field that we actually would be, end up having to have additional maintenance people that we've cut in order to maintain it. Otherwise, we're going to end up with the field back in the same shape again. I mean, if we don't keep it up, I mean, that's what's going to happen. I know you have great ideas with the, with the drainage and I, and I believe you. But again, I mean, I think the qualifier there is to have the maintenance go along with it. And I'm really concerned about that. And I just think that, you know, in a sense, I mean, I have to admit, the amount of money that I was thinking we would be putting out as a bond was much different from what these numbers are showing with the increased costs. But that aside, I think it would be, you know, it's a more prudent thing to do to look for the future, to have the artificial field. And that in some ways it'll pay for itself in the future. Especially, I was, I was very, especially struck by the fact that if the other fields need, or it's pouring rain, as you said, and when you play on a field pouring rain, it destroys the field. That you can play on the other field at that time and at least maybe even keep a field fallow for development to improve that. Because obviously, we're not going to have turf all over the place, artificial turf, just on the one field. But, you know, again, that would be saving money into the future too. So I know it's a lot of money upfront, but I, I would, at this point, go along with the option three that was up there for the artificial turf so that all, all the sports can use it, not- that was up there for the artificial turf, so that all, all the sports can use it, not just, not just football.
Just in line with what Lynn just said, I don't know if you can pull up that slide that shows the turf field and the savings it does over the ten years? Do you know what slide I'm talking about?
I just got to remember how to get out of here.
Okay.
There.
But I think that this is kind of what Lynn was.
I don't think that was here.
That one? The other file?
I was looking for the slide that had the numbers of over like a ten-year.
Cost per.
Cost per year and the savings. But we can continue, just. No.
No, it was, it was the file that showed the turf.
What per event, cost per event having down the field?
Is that in this?
No, okay. I mean, okay, it was just showing, you know, the overall savings and per, you know, usage of the field. It was actually more cost effective for the turf. Okay, so I have you down, option three, Lynn?
For the time being.
Mike, Laura?
I'm really torn on the two options, option two and option three. There's a million dollar difference there, almost. I just don't know tonight. I have to think about it some more.
But you're okay with one type of turf?
As long as, again, I feel that it needs to be separated out from the main bond. If it's going to be included in the main bond, I may well say no.
Okay. Laura?
I would probably go along with Mike. I, this is probably one of the hardest decisions I had to make, which seems kind of silly considering all the other decisions we've been making. But I guess I'm most torn about this one. Because, yeah, I would love to be put in the big turf field out there, and I do believe that athletics are part of academics, but I also believe that we are just cutting everywhere these days. And to, to, to put that much money into that when we have all these other things. Because if we go with option three, it is a thirty million dollar bond. I don't think that's going to pass. I don't even think that we would support a thirty million dollar bond here at the table. So however much more you're putting into the turf is taking away from our, our facilities that need to be done. And I guess it's, it is the want, need thing. I think our needs right now are much more important, and we have to do them. So I don't see how we can support the increase in the field. I also, as I said a few minutes ago, I really think that the turf field in with the bond is, is, there's a huge risk that the bond's going to go down. And I just don't know that I'm willing to take that kind of risk. So not that it really matters here, but I probably would go with option one still. Unless we separate it out, then I would be probably willing to talk about a turf field. Because if the community's willing to support the additional tax increases, then I'm, Mike, I would support that, to let the community decide if they want. But I also think the other number that I asked Judy for tonight is going to be very important in this decision. So I guess I'm not giving you a very definitive answer, but that's the way it is.
And then, anybody else have anything to? And I would personally go with option three also. I think just the fact that, you know, I kind of go with what Kate was saying that, you know, now's the time to do it, was, I mean, unfortunately, now's the time to do it because I know it's hard to ask people for more money. But with the fact that we have state aid that will get back, and we don't know that we won't have that next year, the fact that interest rates are low, the fact that it's, we do this in three years out, it's going to cost that much more money. I've also been hearing that with the turf field, it's actually going to be a cost savings down the road. I know we received a letter today where people pay a lot of money to utilize that. The soccer club was even saying tonight that they, you know, pay a lot of money to use it, and they much rather do it in their hometown. So just hearing from all those things, and I think, you know, if we do something, we're going to, we should do it right. I think if you just fix something cheap, we're going to be doing that in two years, we're going to be fixing it again. I also go, you know, you put all this money into the bond, and it's kind of like, I think about like my own home, you know, I hate to put a roof on because you don't see it, you know, but you put like carpeting out for a thousand bucks or whatever, and it just, you see it every day, and it feels good. And I think that's kind of what our students would have, is that pride, going to their games and having a really beautiful, you know, turf field to be playing on, so. But, so I guess.
So I kind of need direction, I know it's difficult. What do you wish us to bring back to start as our numbers to start paring down from for the second for the architect?
Can I ask a question? Are you trying to determine tonight if there's one or two bonds? Because I'm hearing two board members.
No, well, we, we could. I think what originally we tried to plan is, are we putting a turf forward? And of what I have right now, there's four of us that do want option three. So I would say that that would be a go for now. I mean, all these are tentative throughout into the whole thing.
Well, I still like to hear a little more about the energy performance contract, too.
I also don't understand, Tom, because I thought these numbers are firm. What do you, you keep saying you need something for more numbers. I thought these are firm.
Well, what happens is, as they, they firm up the numbers, you have sort of like a maximum cost number. We're, we're going to ask Ashley McGraw now to try to refine even more on the soft cost side, once they know the overall scope. It's hard to compare design contingencies, construction contingencies, if you're not doing a major overhaul versus renovation. So that, that is some changes that they will have to address in their cost projections. Dan, do you want to speak to that?
I think you said that we, you know, together, the core team, looking at this, Greg and I, Pete and our engineer, is exactly what you said, figuring out from that budget where we are realistically, so we can move forward, that's what you said.
And, and one of the, one of the things that we're also going to have to make some decisions in, in that discussion is, remember, when we started, we've tried to hold the mentality, we were not trying to put up costs that were costs to make people feel good. In other words, trying to predict that it's going to be on the low end. We've asked, "Don't be overly conservative in your numbers. Give us what you expect probably where they were, so that we would not have to come back to the board later and say, "Well, we put up this project that was supposed to be this much, oh, but it actually is going to cost another four million dollars on top of it after." It's much easier to be overestimated and then trim back, and that's what we're, we're trying to do. I mean, essentially, if the board ever approved any project, whatever that project is, everything ultimately on cost goes to bid. And if it goes to bid, that's where we're truly going to find out the cost of the project. It could come underbid significantly, it could come right on bid, or it can come over. That's really what's going to happen. We're, architects and the projects can only give you their estimate of what they assume the cost is going to be like two years out. We've asked them to try to not be conservative, that's why you're seeing these numbers. And I think that's what both of you have done in regards to this, correct?
And then we're continuing to do that.
I mean, just like they have speculated, I mean, just in our discussions, that if something was to go out in the bid, in this, this type of a bidding climate and economy right now, even in the two thousand twelve to two thousand and fourteen, there is potentially an option that the bids will come back, you know,
thirty years ago, they're coming back thirty to thirty-five percent under what the estimate was. It's not going to be that good.
I forgot, I had asked about the energy performance contract. Before we move on to this other stuff, I really want to hear about that. The energy performance contract, about what might be pulled out, or whatever, or where we are with that.
Dan, would you like to address that from our meeting, please?
One of the issues that we need to address with the energy performance contract and going forward with the bond project is that, is timing. Timing is a big one. The first thing we have to tackle for our energy performance is timing. And one of the things that is hamstringing us is that it takes, from what we've learned and we've talked with ECG and others, and our engineers, and just in the industry, to get an, an energy, an ESCO to come in and do an energy audit, to confirm, look at the list of things, confirm those items that were highlighted, and to come back with calculations that say, "Oh, we can get a payback on this of eighteen years" and make an energy performance contract work. If we went out tomorrow to create an RFP to get those ESCOs to come in and look at it, we would be looking at weeks before we got the information back. And it pushes up, pushes us back against a wall of March. It would be around mid-March that we would receive calculations with energy savings of these are the items that you can do. So that hamstrings us right now in that we cannot, without any, you know, complete and hundred percent certainty, say, "This, this, and this, we know we can get an energy performance." We can only recommend that, often we've seen those go in energy performance. So you don't have rock solid information from a third party that says we can do it. However, we've also gone forward with capital projects, and we've put together that list, it's a timing issue, and put out those items and more. And the ESCO will come and look at the items we're doing in a capital project, say a boiler. It's a perfect example. And if that boiler, old to new replacement, meets or exceeds the performance levels to save energy, that could be part of an energy performance contract. ESCOs will also look at other items that aren't necessarily in our capital project, like putting energy miser devices on vending machines so that they're not running all the time. So they'll look through the district, all the buildings in the district, and they will come up with just energy-saving measures that may or may not be part of any sort of capital project, but the district would recoup those energy savings when you did those. So, and what we've heard is based on, you have about a million spur feet of district, you would get some, a percentage of savings of low-hanging fruit of those energy-saving things, timers and management systems of, of, I don't know, something between one and two million dollars. So that would be money that would go back to the district in terms of energy savings. That's not looking at capital items. I'm not sure if I answered your question, except that the timing of getting actual data on energy performance contract that would offset capital project wouldn't come until, probably till March.
But couldn't you still do that, and let's say, whatever we might agree to as an amount?
Exactly.
You can always not spend the whole bond issue.
Yes, yes.
But you can't, obviously, spend more.
Exactly, because you, you will ask the voters to allow you to borrow money for a capital project. And oftentimes, you start with a bond anticipation note, and towards the end of the project, you actually borrow the money. So you are in the position to, to look at scope in this project that can be funded by other means, then you can take that out of your capital project, and you won't have to borrow that, that much. And so your, your actual, the end result will be less of a impact to the voter. I know, and it's really, it's, it's almost convoluted, but it's like apples, oranges, and bananas together, to try to understand how that works.
But couldn't we at least put in, you said, one to two million, with your best expertise on that, that they would be included? So at least that would take those off, you know, that, you know, our list.
Yes, but I think that we wouldn't, it wouldn't be. Wrong, I'll get a, well, yeah, I'm trying to think of the word. If you, you would want to include that in your, in your request to the voters for a referendum, that work. Because, and then take it out when you can with an energy performance. If you say, "I'm going to take it out now," and you vote on the bond, and you realize the work they took out can't get a hundred percent funded, it's very difficult then to put it back into what you voted on. So that's where we're in a timing issue of, how do you do this to make it, make it, you know, make sense?
I appreciate the time factor and the, and the work you've been doing on this, but it puts us at a disadvantage in making a lot of very crucial decisions here. So what I would like to ask is if you could put together your very most conservative estimate, say it's one million, two million, whatever. If we end up with three, four million dollars, hooray, we're all the better. But at least going into these crucial decisions, we would have better idea of what we're asking the voters to support if we knew we could trim off one million, two million with certainty.
We can, what can we do? We can put together our best, our, what you said, our best guess of what is potentially could be done in an energy performance contract. Again, I just want you to know, it's, would be very difficult for anyone to guarantee some third party coming in and saying they could do less or more. So I mean, that's why I just want expectations.
I would say aim low with this guest estimate. Because you don't want to, you know, come back to us in two months' time and say, "Well, I told you, two million, but it's really only going to be a half a million." So, so aim low, but at least if you can give us some number to work with, that would be helpful.
And we've worked with ESCOs before, and our engineers have, and they've put together RFPs to get energy performance contracts done. And what we'd like to do is look at it, that's why it's nice to go back to building by building, because you'll see things that go together. So if you're doing a boiler and lights and other energy-saving things in one building, that may, that may, that may cover all of that energy expense. But if it's like split up into different pieces that are hard to combine, then it's much more difficult for some third party to come in and guarantee you items. So we will do that, and we'll do our due diligence, make, make sure it's not, you know, you can't guarantee it. But that these are, these are very reasonable, very.
Well, let's just talk about that dilemma, because initially, when we started this process, it was our goal that we could go out for an energy performance contract and that we could remove certain light items that we know are energy performance, or that we feel are energy performance light items, okay? So as we got more into this process and talking to, to ECG and other consultants, it is not them that are going to guarantee that we can do the high school pool dehumidification system that is one of the items on the bond, okay? It is this third party, it is this ESCO, it is this contract.
It is this third party, it is this ESCO, it is this contractor that's going to come in and going to do a full assessment of all of our facilities, and basically pick, whether they pick the high school pool recovery as an energy-saving measure, or replacing of T-8s, or all of, or roofing, or whatever, there's no way that any of the engineers are going to be able to guarantee that we can remove from the scope that you are looking at, the high school pool work, okay? So that's where we kind of step back to say, okay, well, to be conservative, you know, possibly we need to include that at that point, maybe we can get approval from you to proceed with an EPC and to get those proposals out there, because it is a very lengthy process, and have these ESCOs come in, and I don't think it's mid-March, and I think it's actually later than that, another point of their response back, okay? Then, so, we have a project here, it's just I don't know how much potentially could be taken out here, so.
See, originally with the bite that we were initially told with an ESCO coming in and talking to us, it was about 4.5, and that included one of the issues that is of detriment and concern to Ashley is the roofing, where some could have a project possibly big enough that they could get roofing, which average life is over about 80 to 100 years, to average out to about 18 years with all the little stuff that they could get to quick recovery on. And that's why we hire an architect, the architect does not feel that that's probably viable. It might be viable for maybe a roof, but not the roofing project, depending on what happens. So really, what we need to do is, Ashley has the ability with their engineers to develop that and bring it so that we can get that guarantee. There's no, I don't believe, there's no cost up until it's like that we sign a contract with anyone. And we can start that process, but they can give us the closest estimate. I know when we've talked, it's been about $1 million and a half to $2 million, right in there, that they feel, I think, I think Beth said, about 80 to 85%, depending on getting the ESCOs in, and that it could grow just until you do that. I would probably, and I think Greg has also discussed this with me, that we would probably try to get it so that it's done with our architect, and somebody that the architect works directly with, that might be the best way to proceed at this point to get those numbers.
Yeah, and I'm not concerned about the specific line items, Greg. That's between you and Ashley to figure that out. I just want to get a conservative figure of what we think we can definitely save from this bond.
And I, Dan, if I can ask the question, for, like, roughly, if we were able to take out $1 million that we knew could potentially go to an energy performance contract, that also takes out another $450,000 in soft costs, correct? Because that would be better. Yes, that was case, yes. So that's, that's something I think that the board is looking to try to understand. So what I'm hearing is, no matter what's the decision tonight, one overall project plan and scope in your format, from here on out, for that next, first meeting in January, also, I know, it's going to be a long, short Christmas break.
It's like, three days.
Yes, I know. And then also the EPC position, I think if you can have Beth to be able to speak on that, and then really to be able to speak on what are the major scopes at that point of that project. Does that help everybody for what we've talked about?
Diane, can we turn back for a second to the two turf options? And I know Tom and Ashlyn McGraw are probably going to kill me, but I would recommend that we keep the two options on the table at this point, because, at least for myself, I'm not ready to say which one I want to go with.
Although, I just thought that, I mean, at least we have four that said three already, I mean, I'm not sure. I would only support three, because I want a facility that's going to be able to be used by all sports. I've said that from, from day one, it's not a football field, it's an athletic field for use for the school, for physical education, and for extracurricular sports. I don't know if anyone else has that same feeling of the four of us that spoke.
I have that same feeling, too. I just, I know Tom was working on numbers, the difference, the difference between like option two and option three is, would you have like $1.80?
Well, it's about a nine, I think a $900,000 difference of these, in the numbers. When you use the numbers, they're extrapolating, and it's, the total cost of the potential field at 3.8 of the whole project, based around $26 million, is about 14% on the amounts used, which means it would be from turf, option B, that would be about $6.60 using those numbers, to shift from turf option B to turf option C, it would go to $8.40, a difference of about a dollar, yeah, $1.80 between the two options. So that, that's about the monetary value, as much as we can put in there. One of the things I can say is, if you put together the one option, the only, if you put together the option C, the only difference you're talking about later is whether or not you go to the 220, or you keep it within, so you can always reduce that price down. And that, no matter what, both of those prices are there. I think you brought up some interesting points last year, depending on what are needs in part of that price versus what is wants in part of that price, depending on perspectives of people, but that's the.
But with option two, the other sports wouldn't be able to use the field, the soccer people wouldn't be able to use it, or?
They can always use it, they not, they not prefer to use that type of field. I know when I met with the soccer boosters at their request, their preference, at least as they were talking to me, is the wider field, because that's what most of the fields are played on. However, there are some fields that they'll play on that would have to be at the smaller realm, because some districts have not put that in. Few and far between. There is no sectional contest that will play on anything below recommended dimension for any athletic sport. The only one that does that is basketball, and that's only at the lower. But I, I mean, I can, I can do anything, I prefer to have it so that they get a little more laser focus on what they're doing.
No, I think, I think Matt had a point, that we did have the four that wanted the option three, so it's easy to do that, and just put the one option on.
Diane, can you see the speaker while they're just?
No, I said Matt did have a point, that we had the four people who wanted the option three, so.
I also want all the tier one, all the tier one improvements, too.
Do you want to, should we do, all right, so we did the field part, what else?
Well, initially.
Right now, no matter what the project is, tier one, tier two, tier three, everything in that list, I will tell you, we will knock off, and just so I can put this on the record, I think Greg, you agree. We had some items that are on this list that are in italics, items 149 to 157, some of them we have already done in-house, and if we can, we will try to address some others. But we feel at this point, either we can do them in-house, or these are at a point that we can take off. It's not that much, but at least it's started the process of trimming, too.
Well, but Tom, I think you misspoke a little bit. The, we have priority one, two, and three, they're not, we haven't said we're doing all that.
No, no. I'm just saying, right now, that's what's in there. In other words, we have not talked about, I only want to do level ones, or I only want to do level three.
Right, right.
So everything's in there, but we're going to knock off this portion of the level threes, which I would hope that the board would concur.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
I thought so. So we'll do that in our preparations for tomorrow's posting of this material, as well, so that everybody has what we put out. And then, really, we'll develop one, two, and three with the option three at this point, knowing that we can still move back and forth, but that is probably the maximum cost at that point, and then it's really fine-tuning. I really want to try to get a much finer soft cost number, because that really changes the number dramatically in that time.
Well, we come back in January 2nd, where we, one of our tasks, between that week and possibly the following, is determining the size of the bond.
Correct, yep, overall size. And if you can, I think, might have had a discussion, you started a little of the discussion on, if I know that this is where I'm starting point, the only real question that is, the major question, is how do you place this in for the voters? And that's been a dialogue between the board. That might also be a dialogue that helps zero in on this as well, that you, I'm not recommending that you increase time at a board meeting, but that certainly helps the discussion going forward as well. You've already started it, if you went along that, but that's up to you guys.
What do you think, do you want to get into that discussion tonight, of putting the, you know, how we're going to put it up on the bond?
Or at least discuss it so that people can think about it between now and the second.
For me, it's hard to have the discussion without knowing the size of the bond.
Okay.
And I'm not sure about it either, but I, but I do think if we do separate things out, then we probably have to put playgrounds with the turf field, too. I mean, it just would make sense, outside, you know, things should be together, or whatever. But I think it's still a problem of, if one goes and one doesn't, and what do you do? I mean, if we, I mean, the field needs repair, so if, 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 let's say, the turf went down, then what are we doing about the field? So do we have to include that in the regular, I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how that works, if you have two, two different options put up for the voters.
Well, I, I guess, I was always kind of assuming if we split it, it would just be the turf field would be split out, the rest would be in here. But I also don't, and obviously, we have to have this discussion, I'm not willing to put up a $30 million bond for a vote. This whole list is not going to go, in my mind, and.
Right, well, I don't think it will either.
The playgrounds are too, so if we're only going with priority ones.
I mean, I used to, I used to be there at Slumums Hammering and whatever, before fancy playgrounds, we, and, you know, it just, it's not, that's a one, not a.
All I'm saying, Lynn, is that, you know, the playgrounds are pretty far down on this list, and unless you're planning on putting a $30 million bond up, we're not even going to get to the playgrounds.
No, I, I was thinking back on a $15 million bond issue that we put on, you know, major additions to three elementary schools, and it just, just seems amazing to me, and.
Costs have gone up.
Costs have gone up.
I'd like to say, I mean, I haven't said that, I haven't made a decision in my mind that we're not doing a $30 million bond either, the opposite to that. We may be having to do that, I mean, I'm relying on Greg and the architects to tell us what's necessary. And again, if we don't do it now, two years from now, three years from now, you're looking at higher costs. We've identified what, what are capital improvements to our facilities to bring them up to par, or to enhance them. And so, that's the way I'm leaning, is, we've heard what is necessary, or what's needed for our facilities, and we need to think about that in reality.
Anyone else want to pipe in? No?
I think we need to see the number before we make a decision on separating them out. And what complications it would, you know.
I would agree with Lynn, I mean, if we have a separate bond, we haven't spoken about what would be a separate bond, I mean, there's been talk about separating the turf, but then do you get into the, you know, philosophical issue, is playgrounds necessary versus even technology?
Well, I was just thinking anything else.
Yeah, what else would be separated out, so.
Well, Charmaine showed you there's, you know, over, what, $3 million of other athletic events, and you have other athletic issues in here, you put it all into the jump bond, and do all the athletic separately, it's on it.
Well, it depends, because those features.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you, you throw out options, I'd throw out lots of options.
I would appreciate that discussion, I would be very careful, and this is only my advice, of oversimplifying the athletic piece with some of the others, because, like, for instance, the pool has a major cost issue.
How was it?
I know, that just has an issue that's been there in the budget and so forth, but what happens is, there's major energy efficiencies there that we do know of, that need to be addressed, or else we are going to deteriorate because of the, how, how would I say, Dan? The atmospheric conditions, that's really, unfortunately, the cost is driven by that. That probably should have been dealt with a long time ago. That's an instructional space as well, and that's what I'm trying to get at. We've got to be very, it can be seen as both on every, every front, some more than others.
Right, and the features, for example, have to be replaced, and that's, I think that's the number one, that's priority one, it could be seen as an athletic space, but it's.
I wasn't advocating.
No, I don't worry.
Well, plus the fact it was in a previous bond issue and didn't get done, so I'm.
I would recommend that we table this discussion until the January 2nd meeting.
But please think about it, because I know everybody knows that. And other than that, I think you're, you're well on, still on the scheduled timeline of where you would be, and there's still some flexibility.
I would just emphasize again that, and I think some, some of the, that depending on what the format we use with the architect, people have to realize that these, these costs don't include soft costs, we have to constantly reinforce, because otherwise it looks like, oh, it's $16 million, you can get all this, and you can't.
Yeah, and that's why, even through the beginning, when it was $15 million, we were saying it, but people do forget it. I think Dan, in your, yours, it automatically has it in it then, right?
Yeah, we'd like to, yeah, because I briefly showed it a couple, couple, four days ago. Yeah, and that would be inclusive, so then you don't have to sort of do that calculation in your head or something, it would be, you know, we like to do, yeah, so you see the whole order of magnitude.
So that I can help the board have some time with that, could, now that you've got overall priority list, can you get me that so that I can give that to the board this Friday in your format, building by building?
Sure.
I know it's there. This is going to probably cost me a long time down the road.
And then, can I request a user-friendly as possible?
Yeah, that, that.
Color-coded. A number of columns and coloring and stuff, it gets a little.
Yeah, his will just be the straight form that he's requiring, basically, his company uses, but will be basically the reporting form that he'll have to use with state aid to meet their requirement. So they won't necessarily manipulate, but I'd rather have you have as much time so that when you come back, you could ask questions as well.
So we'll endeavor to get that to you this Friday.
Greg, he'll take care of it.
Is it possible to just make a value comment about, if you did not have the bond, you all this had to be paid for in budget, the cost of the local monthly, about $30 million to $70 million, is that accurate?
The cost borne by the local tax base would more than double.
So what I'm just trying to get at is, you can set up the fact that this is being, that 70% of this cost is not coming out of a mandate directly, whether you're talking about athletics, or you're talking about facilities, or whatever, the, like, early period, all this stuff, it's like not going to make this on your deal. If you don't do it, your project is going to break down, and you have to let people go down the street. And I don't understand how you're going to pare down one, two, six, three, you have no priorities, or, if you don't maintain your deal, it's 1% is going to die, and you can't, you know, see what they're. Now, Tom may be aware of a point which I never even thought of, we don't own this building, it belongs to New York State, that's why they give us building name, they need their items taken care of, that's why it exists. I don't think we really have a choice, we see how it's built. So if you don't do it today, it's going to cost you three times more to do it in two or three years when you do it second.
I believe it belongs to the school district, because as I understand, the property was purchased from landowners to build the high school by the school district, on the approval by the voters back in the 50s or whatever, so.
Indirectly, it's basically, probably, yeah.
Indirectly, this is a government facility.
Indirect.
In, how would you say, in good trust to the community of the town of Batlin and town of Scott.
And I, yeah, and I agree, like, the $30 million, I'm hoping it would be more like the 28 or 29, but.
I think it'd be like, it might be a little lower.
I think I can get it.
29, 999, no. But, no, because, I mean, $21 million of that would come back to state aid, right? It would be roughly $9 million, give or take?
Roughly, it's roughly about a third, so if you use $30 million, $10 million would be local base.
$10 million, yeah.
Right, Judy? $20 million would be state.
It's amortized over time.
Whatever it is, whatever it is divided by.
Yeah, $9 million, $21.
21, 70%, it's 21, 21 million.
Thought I had my math right there, I didn't know it was late, so, okay, but we'll, we'll discuss that for two weeks.
I think we have the direction where we can go.
Okay, anything else?
No.
No, we'll, we'll get to that. There's another part on the agenda, we'll, we'll do that, thanks.
Finance.
Okay. Finance, it is recommended that the Board of Ed. Finance, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance actions, items A through E.
So move.
I had a question on E. Is Slingerlands going to be included in there?
Was there first and a second on that?
Second, I seconded it.
Okay.
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
The jump start.
Slingerlands isn't part of it.
Right.
Are we going to do it in four schools and not five?
Four schools are doing it through the jump start, through donations. Slingerlands has a parent group that is going to organize it themselves.
Do it separately.
Yeah.
Any other?
The agenda for the public. The agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to point out, I know that it was cut by the board and there were some questions about it, but again, PTAs are stepping in, funding programs.
Well, I should say that they said only this year.
Only this year, yeah.
That they don't want to be responsible for something that works.
Okay.
I recognize the donations there too. I know we already did the music one earlier, but.
Right. All in the buses.
The buses.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and, I lost the other person on the agenda. Is this it? Yeah, I got it. Professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items, A through G.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, A.
So move.
Second.
A through B.
Yeah, I was going to say, what, mine?
A and B.
So is this important? Oh, I have a different agenda.
Maybe from previous page, maybe you went too far. Oh, you went too far.
Oh, where? Oh, right there. Okay, I'm sorry. A through B.
So move.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Took so long.
Any opposed? That carries?
Of course, I missed A through C. You're missing a page.
I'm missing a page.
There you go.
Okay. Correspondence fraction, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence actions, items A through C.
Can we do them each individually, because I think there could be some questions here?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll move A.
Second.
Committee on Special Ed.
We can still move them all and then discuss them all. No?
Curriculum changes.
Okay. Do we need to have a motion to separate them?
Yep.
Okay. So is there a motion to separate them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Any opposed?
And I moved A.
Second.
Okay. Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. B, the high school curriculum changes for the 2013-14 school year?
So move.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes. I have, I just have some questions. I don't know, did you want to present it at all, or you just want to take questions?
No, we're just planning on taking questions.
Okay.
And I can't answer it all, unless the supervisors are to stop later.
I, I just had a question about the math changes, and I know you and I had a little bit of a conversation on that, but I'm trying to figure out exactly what we're doing, what you're proposing, or what they're proposing here. Not that I'm opposed to it, I'm just trying to understand it, and also to try and figure out, um, what, what it's changing. I mean, like, changing enriched algebra two and trig, replacing algebra two and trig, 11, 1, does that mean there isn't an algebra two and trig 11, 1?
There's been a lot of changes with math, obviously. They went from algebra, then back to math A, B, then from math A to math B. We started a couple of years ago, removing some of the extended courses in the high school, and I'm going to, Dave Purse, our Mass Supervisor Chair, I'm going to let him talk to you about how these changes are a continuation of some of those previous changes.
These are actually a continuation from two years ago. We began phasing out our year and a half stretch course program, which what that did was students took algebra and geometry over three years as opposed to two, and that basically froze them out of the opportunity of taking the third Regents exam. So only about 60% of our students were really eligible for the advanced Regents diploma. So we, we phased out that year and a half stretch course, which now, anywhere between 80 and 85% of our students will be eligible for the advanced Regents diploma, because what we did is we moved the stretch from the beginning of the program to the end. So now, the students that used to stretch algebra and geometry over a three-year period, which would leave them only a year to do algebra two and trig, which is not reasonable considering they stretched the first two courses, they're now doing algebra in one year, geometry in one year, and they're stretching the algebra two trig over two years. So students in the past that really had no viable option of taking that third Regents exam now have that opportunity. And last year was the first year that we saw that the Regents score was actually improved for our sort of traditional students that would have stretched over a year and a half. Their results were actually better doing it in one year than past cohorts had been in doing it a year and a half.
So, um, what about the kids then that are just on grade level?
They still follow, they take algebra year one, geometry year two, algebra two trig year three, and then pre-calc year four.
Oh, they do, okay.
That's the traditional path.
Because that's what I was afraid we were just going to enrich in honors, but the regular is still there and available for the on-grade level kids.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then I think I get it. And I was trying to follow your little chart.
As confusing as the chart looks, there are far fewer options now than there used to be.
But, and kids still can move around.
Yes, yeah, those arrows are the traditional pipettes.
From honors to enriched, enriched, or something like that, yeah.
Right.
Because that's what they've done before.
Right.
Okay, then, um, that's my question in math, but I have another question too.
Yeah.
The explanation on the lab school. It says, please see attached revised lab school course overview and requirements, and we get that, but I would like to know, what are the changes? What was revised?
Right, the changes in the lab school, there were some, the lab school changes really were more about language. It wasn't accurate in the, the past curriculum handbook as to what was actually offered. It was referencing geometry in the traditional high school when the course really was not the same. It's a different program, obviously. You know, lab school does meet, have kids take Regents, but not, they don't necessarily all take the geometry Regents, and that's what that was referencing within the actual course description. So what Mr. Landry had the lab school teachers do with the supervisors and himself were to go through and revise that, those descriptions to make sure they aligned with the current practice, because there were some inaccuracies in there. So the actual curriculum has not changed moving forward, but the language has changed to make it reflective of what the program actually is.
So, for instance, in that mathematics one, you have five levels of math here. Do the kids take, I mean, it does correspond that algebra is level one or anything like that?
It does. They have math one, math two, but what, what it said in the prior handbook was refer to geometry in the traditional high school, and that course description really did not line up with math two.
Oh, I see.
So that, that's the changes.
So what do most kids at the lab school go through? I mean, they can't get through five levels.
No, they, most of the kids take the algebra Regents, which is required. Some of them take geometry, and often, that's all they take, although we have had some kids, they continue on and they take the advanced algebra course as well, but they don't necessarily take the Regents. And we've had some challenges that we're trying to work through in that sequencing, because we've tried to, we came across this problem a little bit last year with Chinese. We tried to open up other options for kids, and it creates some problems with the schedule and the courses, trying to be flexible, but it doesn't necessarily work. So we're actually working, Mr. Landry and myself, with the lab school teachers and the supervisors to look at the program and really streamline some things and, you know, kind of maybe revisit, going back to, if this is our lab school program, this is our lab school program, because we try to kind of veer off and meet everyone's needs, and it's creating a lot of conflicts within the lab school in keeping with that project-based learning, the program that it was intended to. So people get in there and then they decide they want to take A, B courses, they want to take, you know, they want to get that advanced Regents. So we've tried to accommodate that, and at the same time, that creates some problems as well.
So, um, using the math as an example then, you've got five levels. Are the kids mixed up as far as grades? Like, there could be sophomore and freshman both in level two or something like that?
Sometimes, yeah, but that happens in the.
No, 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 I'm not saying it's a bad thing.
Yeah, no, right.
So kids can move, they move around through this, and, and, so, okay. In the languages then, because I know that has been a problem. At one time, we, one of the budget things that we talked about was trying to not isolate the languages of the lab school, and so do regular ed or regular school, high school kids, are they scheduled into any of the lab school languages, or?
No, the lab school languages though are different levels within the same class period. So you don't have just, for example, Spanish two offered in just this period. It could be Spanish two, three, and there's, so that's how that's addressed. But there aren't any regular high school students in the lab school languages. Again, that's another area we're looking at, should we maintain two languages in lab school? Do we need to reconsider that?
So does it end up that, you know, we increased it to 30 kids per grade in lab school? Does it end up, what do their average class sizes end up being then, when, because, you know, when you have five levels instead of just four levels, obviously, it's going to be below 30 kids per grade, per class. What does that do in each of these different areas as far as their average class sizes?
Well, the core subjects, don't forget, we changed that a couple of years ago. So the ninth and 10th grade classes enroll 30.
Right.
So their core subjects, English, social studies, science, math are pretty much at 30.
Because they stay within that same room?
Initially, yeah.
Okay.
You know, the languages are a little bit lower as they go up, and so are some of those higher level math classes, because not all of the kids maintain that. But I would say they're not, now that we're having 30 kids in each, going in, they're not that, they're very similar to the rest of the high school with the exception right now of a couple of upper level classes, because there's not 30 kids enrolled, and we've got those varying levels.
So if those, if the, you know, juniors or seniors or something decide not to take the upper level math or one of the upper level languages, do they, can they take an elective then in the regular ed? Or what are they doing?
Well, it depends. I mean, some kids may do internships, some kids may look for another elective or what, and really, you know, that's where I think things have, we've tried to meet everyone's needs, and it's become somewhat problematic in, within the structure of the lab school.
Do AP classes are still not an option for your class?
Correct.
AP classes are not?
Well, we've tried, that's one of the issues that, no, not really, no, not, but they have been allowed in the past to some degree, again, which creates some problems if the kid takes it outside of the lab school. They're not offered within the lab school.
Right. So the letter went out to the eighth graders already about the presentation, and it says that it's a Regents level class.
Regents program.
And it doesn't say, I think if it said, this is not for kids on an AP track, that should have been put in the letter, because obviously, having an eighth grader this year, I, I've had multiple people say to me, are you looking into the lab school for your son? I tell them, it's not for AP level kids, and they say, oh, that should have been told us. And, and that's the reaction that I get. So there's a whole group of kids in the advanced classes, say, advanced math right now, that are not looking at that level, that should be told off the top. Now, if they change and want to drop level, that's their decision, but, and I've talked to Mr. Landry, obviously, about this before, but I, I just think you've got to give everybody the information, and I don't think they should get through that whole meeting and then find out that this was not what they were interested at all. I think in the letter, that should have gone out before parents make the arrangements to come to something that they know off the top of their head is not an issue, is, is not for their child.
And that's one thing, actually, that we've already spoken to with the lab school teachers and about really being upfront with the programs. I think one of the reasons that we've, we've found ourselves somewhat in the situation where we have, you know, trying to meet kids' needs as they get in there, feel bad for them, you want to accommodate it, you know, what their requests are so they can stay in lab school, because they want to, but they also want this. And I think that, you know, given some of the constraints we have due to budget reductions we had over the last several years and limits on other sections of classes, that's really not possible anymore. So I think the more upfront we are about that this is a Regents program, this is what we offer, and if you decide to be in lab school, this is the program you will proceed, that that will hopefully eliminate some of those requests after kids get into the program.
Right, yeah.
But the original intent of the lab school, when it was formed, was that it would be a heterogeneous grouping of students.
But the.
But we also didn't have.
It's a community of learning, that's the whole.
They al, they also had waivers, they didn't need to take Regents at that time, and, you know, it was just a totally different program immigrating.
Yeah, I mean, just learning about it, at that time, there was a local diploma option that provided a lot of alternatives, whether or not the students available themselves. That's not the case any longer. So the base program is now a full Regents program. That's the base level. So I think that's some of the transitions that they're looking at. I know Scott, as well as Jody, have been talking about some of the options for increasing rigor as well.
Any other?
No, that's it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries?
I was going to comment.
Oh.
Just the entrepreneurship course and the, um, the global business course, I think are nice, nice additions, and I hope students take advantage of it. It seems, you know, we need to have a growing population of kids going into their own businesses, some of you have done here, and have the opportunity to learn about it, I think is great. So I hope, I hope, I hope you get the numbers, you know.
That they do.
And then to approve, C, approved resolution of the secret determination related to potential athletic field improvements.
Second.
It's a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries? And then visitors? Go ahead.
I didn't know there was a microphone here before, and I'm wondering. Yeah, if you could come to the center, please.
Sure. Brian McKenna again. Couple of comments, just, I don't want to, having dealt with different school districts over the years, both where I've lived and where I've worked, and not being in the school business right now, I have to tell you that this process that you're doing and your transparency and your, your information efforts really are to be commended. This is pretty open, and these different steps that you've taken, both online and through different social media, I think it's pretty progressive. So as you consider your options, I hope you don't, I hope that you keep in mind and not underestimate the power of a good public information effort and outreach when it comes to voting and it comes to your bonds, because I think you've done better than most that I've seen. Not that I'm the, you know, ultimate judge, but I think that observation needs to be made. I think that when I hear comments about, I, I've sat here long enough, I have to share this, but when I hear about the fact that you folks have been accused of stuff, or that there's been agenda, or that there's been any of that, there's no public office that you could be voted for, voted into, that doesn't bring some of that on. You're going to be accused of stuff. You're going to be accused of stuff, you're going to be, you're held to a higher level of decorum than the public you serve. So when people have opinions and they have perspectives, you don't get an, an equal option to respond. People can say what they want in the community, and even though you're not paid well enough, you do serve at the public's pleasure. So you have to expect some of that, and I think you do, um, but I don't know that lamenting it gets you anywhere. I also think that when you say about asking questions, I think this process that you've put forth is asking a question. It is putting an open-ended question in front of the public and asking for a ton of information, and I'm applauding all of you, not the person who's asking one more than anybody else. I think you've all done that, you've all part of this process. I also think that none of the people here, I don't know most of these gentlemen and women, I, I just don't, I know a few, but I will tell you, I don't think anybody here comes with a tag or a label or sits in a section as a football parent. I find that personally, as a parent and an educator, and someone who's been in the business, I find that offensive. I haven't seen one person in any of these meetings come forward with that. In fact, a lot of the people who come forward in, in, as a proponent of some of these, they're coming forward as a proponent for the community and for children. Just like when a taxpayer group comes forward for something, they're not labeled taxpayer, payer parents by you folks, not in public anyway, because that would be disparaging, and to limit anybody to a football parent or a music parent is also disparaging. And you know something else, is in a community, when you choose to live in a community, I don't mean you folks, but all of us, we get benefits, we get results, we get the positive things that come, but with that comes responsibility to contribute. And so we, any of us here that are speaking our minds, I think, don't need to be pigeonholed or labeled as to what we're here for, other than what we bring. And we shouldn't also not be, have to be apologists for speaking up and showing up. If anybody else doesn't do that, that's their right to do. Last two things, and I promise I'll be done and I'll leave, because I've had too much caffeine. One, um, I, I manage about 115 Realtors in the Capital Region. Um, I've worked with the Global Foundries, I'm not a bigwig in my company, but I'm responsible for those 115. I work closely with the owner of one of our biggest companies in the area. We are, we've worked in the last two weeks, I've met with Secret Service people that I'm afraid of, uh, Global Foundry engineers that I'm more afraid of, um, all sorts of people, even in the last three or four weeks, that are relocating to this area. And please understand, when they're driving by communities, they cannot see inside the walls to see what kind of wiring and tech systems you have. They do see a beautiful facility, and they do vote with their feet and their taxpayer dollars and their kids. There's impact here. It affects more than just those kids who run around on that field. And finally, I just, I, I guess, I think it's important, um, I think you did a good job tonight because, with, with sharing, um, what your positions are. I do not support a board that chooses the cheapest option consistently. When it's quoted, and I'm gonna spread this as much as I can to people who live in our community, when it's quoted that I will choose, by any one of you, that you're gonna choose the cheapest, cheapest alternative, and that's a quote, whether it's a music or an athletic field or anything else, I don't want that for my children. I can live in any community I want, I don't have endless resources, but I will vote with my feet, and I don't want you to choose the cheapest one. I want you to choose what's fiscally responsible and best for our kids, and best for the community that voted you in place. That's what I want, and, uh, I think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate the opportunity, thanks.
Thank you, anyone else?
I'm Betsy Gumustop, parent of middle school and high schooler, and I think, I've been, I'm avid supporter of everything that the district comes up with, and I trust what goes on, and I support everything wholeheartedly financially and with enthusiasm for our district. But what I see going on here is, it's not about cheap, it's about need and want. I don't think we're saying, well, let's do the cheapest and be cheap, but we, at some point, we have to say, there's a difference between need and want, because I'm worried we're gonna lose the whole thing. I, I, I agree with all of you, you have the vote, that's all that I care about, because we can put it all together, let's, and it's a great time, we get our money back, it's all fantastic things, I'd love to see it, too, but it doesn't make, you bring a thing about the roof and the thousand-dollar carpet. Are you willing to risk that you're gonna live with puddles of water on your head sitting on your thousand-dollar carpet when you put them together on the same bond? Because of the joy that you get when you put the thousand-dollar carpet down. So what I'm, I'm just saying, I just hope that you guys really, really, and I know it's a gray line, what is a need, a what is a want? I, I, you know, I feel for you folks trying to have to do that, but I really, really think that's the most important thing, is that we, and you want the public to decide, well, say, this is the need, this is the want, we want it all, because it's great for our community, but you have to put it out there, because this is clearly dividing the community, and it's very, very risky, and if the, everything goes down and nothing happens, that, I don't know how you can live with that.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I have one question, and it might be, come across as a stupid question, but I don't know. Does the school district pay for water, to, like I pay for water? We all know the cost of water, and, you know, from the business standpoint, from the economic standpoint, it makes so much sense with the revenue comes in and the savings you have, and I wanted to ask a question to Pete, if you live in this community, would you be in favor for TURF, would you be something, you know, just as a.
Well, I can only speak for either, and we actually did a TURF in our community, too.
Was it perceived good, did they like it, is it?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, the other part, and I sympathize with you, too, is, uh, it doesn't hurt to try, and I know you're always supposed to be positive in your thought process, but sometimes in business, you gotta look at the negative bit, and we put it up, if they vote to put it up for a bond, it doesn't mean it happens. It goes to the voter to either get approved or disapproved. And, and let's, and let's say it didn't approve, how long does it take to put another bond? Six months, a year? Do you have, is there a waiting time?
At least another board meeting in 47 days after a reservation.
So worst-case scenario, if it did fail, as collectively as one, it could go back up relatively in.
Around May, who was gonna vote yes to both of those things?
Well.
March eight, May, that's what puts you.
I look at, I look at it this simple, my house is a little over $250,000, I pay $7,000 a year in school taxes, and I want something for the kids, so I'll pay an extra $5.
So do I, but I don't want to lose the boost not being fixed, I'm not a.
I don't think we have to lose them.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on. Right. And that, that will be a discussion in two weeks, when we talk about how we're gonna put it on the.
I promise this will be quick.
Okay.
Roughly, what did our taxes go up on a $250,000 house last budget?
Last year, do you remember?
I think it was in the neighborhood of $200 and somewhere dollars per household. All, let's say it's $180 per household. What more did we get for that $180? We got no more.
We got less.
Not one thing more, we had things taken away for $180, we're talking about adding potentially $60 to that bill, and look how much you're gonna get for it.
Anyone else? Okay, um, future meetings, Wednesday, January 2nd, should be a good one. Sorry, it's getting late, um, Wednesday, January 16th, and then Wednesday, February 6th. So no need to go into executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?